Thanks. And it is six o'clock, so I'm going to call this meeting to order and begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Led, Councilmember Armendaris, would you mind leading us?
Sure. Ready? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you can be seated. We don't have an invocation today. I do want to announce, it's September, and I try to announce the birthdays of everyone up here on the dais when I can. I forgot last time. It was Jimmy's birthday on September 7th, so happy birthday, Jimmy. Okay, City Clerk's report on posting the agenda and roll call.
Yes, Madam Mayor, the agenda was posted on Thursday, September 14th at 5:50 p.m. Councilmember Armendaris?
Here.
Councilmember Bracco?
Here.
Councilmember Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Hilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marks?
Here.
Councilmember Tovar?
Here.
And Mayor Blinkley?
Here. All right, under Orders of the Day, we have none. Under Employee Introductions, Leanne has at least one.
I do. Good evening. I am pleased to introduce Eucaryio Mendoza to all of you this evening. Eucaryio was recently hired as our in-house custodian and as a member of our amazing facilities team. Eucaryio started work with the city of Gilroy on August 1st and hit the ground running to help maintain and take care of our city facilities. His experience in the field of custodial services comes from working as part of a family-owned janitorial company where they clean restaurants and businesses both in Gilroy and Morgan Hill. He also worked for several years as a food server at Westside Grill, so he might have waited on you, where he provided outstanding customer service and trained new servers that were hired. Eucaryio places a high priority on safety, not only for himself, but for the residents, visitors, and employees who are using our city facilities. In addition to his work experience, Eucaryio was selected for this position due to his positive can-do attitude, his top-notch customer service skills, and his sincere desire to serve his community. In 2021, Eucaryio earned his Bachelor of Science degree in kinesiology from San Jose State University. Go Spartans. And a fun fact about Eucaryio, he's a Gilroy resident, and of all the employees in the city of Gilroy, I think Eucaryio has the shortest commute to work. Google Maps indicates that it's two tenths of a mile, equating to a four-minute walk or a 49-second bike ride to work. You can't beat that. When not working, Eucaryio enjoys playing soccer, fishing, cruising around town on bikes, and exercising and distance running. Please join me in welcoming Eucaryio Mendoza to the city of Gilroy. We already appreciate you, and we thank you for choosing the city of Gilroy as your employer. I have a feeling this is a beginning of a long career, and this is just the first position at the city of Gilroy that he's going to hold.
Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, I want to say thank you to Mayor Blinkley and all the council members and everyone involved in any shape, way, or form with the hiring process. I know it was a very competitive position to get, so I'm very blessed to be in this position today. In this short amount of time that I've been here, I have learned a lot. I'm excited to see what else I can learn, what other positions I can get into possibly, and any other projects that I can possibly tackle along with those that I work with. Currently working on a project over at the police department, and hopefully we will transition into the other buildings around town like City Hall and the fire stations. And yeah, I just wanted to keep it short and simple. Just thank you for the opportunity and see what else we can achieve in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome. Definitely one of the friendliest people, I know. Thank you. Okay, we move on to ceremonial items. This is, we have a proclamation proclaiming September 17th through the 23rd, 2023 is Constitution Week, and I understand that Regent Chris Hernandez and Carol Dreesen are in the audience. If you are, if you could please meet me at the platform, I mean, meet me at the podium. Hi.
Hi.
Okay, I'm going to read the proclamation and then present it, and you'll be able to say a few words if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay, whereas September 17th, 2023, marks the 236th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas American democracy requires our constant care, vigilance, and full participation to determine the course and conscience of the Union, and whereas for more than two centuries, women and men have struggled and strived to make good on the promise of America by amending our Constitution in accordance with the growth and progress as a nation, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations that will commemorate the occasion, and whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, therefore, I, Marie Blankley, Mayor of the city of Gilroy, on this 18th day of September, 2023, together with the city council, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to recognize the protections and freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Thank you.
[applause] Will he send that to us?
We can, if you email, yes. We'll make sure they get that picture, Bryce, right? She's asking, would you like to?
Oops. I'd just like to thank the city of Gilroy for always proclaiming Constitution Week, especially as we approach our 250th anniversary of becoming a country. Gavelin Chapter, Daughters of the American Revolution, right here in Gilroy, that's part of our, what we're all about, is historic preservation and ensuring our Constitution is fulfilled. Thank you.
I'll make sure you get the picture.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Item 3.1, this is presentation to the council for items not on the agenda. If you have, if you wish to speak, hopefully you've completed a card, and Ty, if you would like to go ahead and call the speakers, everyone has, I think, three minutes to speak. I don't see more than, more than 10, correct? Okay.
Correct, Madam Mayor. The first speaker is Terrence Bugatze, followed by Jonathan Silva, followed by Malachi Diaz.
If your name was called, if you could please make sure you're in the front row. Thank you.
Good evening, council, mayor. Last week, the city council received correspondence from the Open Government Commission requesting they might present their findings regarding expanding the capabilities for Gilroy citizens to be informed and engage their government. It wasn't a request to make or approve any policy, any policy, it was simply a request from the commission to be heard. A polling of those on the dais decided three to three that you didn't want to hear from them or hear their findings, and in support of their requests, they even showed that Gilroy is really at the bottom of modernity in terms of engagement for its citizens in their government. Constitution Week, it's pretty good. So it was just a request to be heard and get, you know, and advise city council, which is really what they're supposed to do. And I don't know really what kind of message that will send to all of the city commissions, or those even today here that might be trying to volunteer to give up their free time to serve the city. I encourage you to think carefully not just about the audacity maybe of that, but also the optics that it creates for the public. Now that everyone's present today on the dais, we don't have an absence, a request you might reconsider taking the pulse again to see if the commission may be heard on this matter in a future meeting. If 20 minutes is too much time, you know, cut it in half. Now, having served briefly on this commission, involved in the discussions on this very matter, being a person who feels that we should do all we can to involve more people in their government and make it more transparent, I think the 10 minutes to hear what this commission has to say might be time well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Jonathan Silva, I think. Sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I brought my children today because this is a matter of public safety regarding our children here in Gilroy. So I'm coming today to talk about a public safety issue. Near the school of El Robele Elementary, there's a major intersection. It's off of Bren and Third Street. The reason why I've come to talk to you about this today is because just last week, my daughter was almost hit by a car crossing the street. And talking to other parents, actually, one of her classmates and his father got hit by a vehicle crossing the street there last year. They suffered major injuries, including broken ribs and other things. And the reason why I'm here to talk to you about it today is because I feel that I know what the problem is at the intersection, and I think I have some solutions. So very quickly, I just wanted to say that it's an unprotected left turn in both directions on Third Street, so the drivers feel rushed. They're trying to get across, and they feel that if they don't hurry, they won't make it, putting our children at risk. So what I propose is to make it a protected left turn on Third Street in both directions. My second proposition is, we don't have dedicated crossing guards at this major intersection right on the corner of a school. I know that there are crossing guards at many schools here in Gilroy, but in this particular instance, there isn't. So that's putting our children at risk because they're crossing a major road. And if you look at the nature of that street, the last two years, there have been many walkers, and after these incidents, there are almost no walkers crossing the street there. So that should tell you something about the safety of the location. If we had dedicated crossing guards at that location, kids could walk to school. We choose to do it because it's eco-friendly and it's also good exercise, so we've chosen not to do it anymore. But other families, they may not be able to make that choice. Their kids may have to walk to school out of necessity, and it's really putting them at risk. So we felt that it was important to bring it up to you today. Other families in the neighborhoods have suggested speed bumps on Third Street. I know that that's another suggestion that might be a little bit out there, but those are the three things. So protected left turn in both directions would be super simple and easy to do. There's dedicated turn lanes in both directions on that street. Dedicated crossing guards for children in the morning and afternoons at that intersection, and speed bumps would be my third suggestion. So I'll be following up with an email. Probably a few parents will be supporting me in this matter, but we felt that it was a huge safety issue, and we feel like if our kids can't walk to school, they can't get to school. And if our kids are getting to school in a scared, a state of scared emotion, they can't learn. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Malachi Diaz?
Thank you. My name is Malachi Diaz, and I'm here today as a concerned and engaged member of our Gilroy community advocating for the development of a disc golf course in our city. First and foremost, disc golf is an inclusive sport. It welcomes participants of all ages, backgrounds, and skill levels. Disc golf is a fun and rapidly growing sport that combines elements of golf and frisbee. Players navigate through a series of designated targets, elements called baskets, in as few throws as possible. The sport is easy to learn, affordable, and fosters a strong sense of camaraderie among players. With increasing popularity nationwide, introducing a disc golf course to Gilroy would not only meet the demand of local players, but also attract visitors from neighboring communities, boosting tourism and supporting local businesses. I'd like to highlight the San Benito County Disc Golf Club and the city of Hollister for their work in developing the Park Hill Disc Golf Course in 2022. They regularly hold course workdays in which volunteers from the Disc Golf Club and community come out to the park to make upgrades and do landscape work. I floated this idea on social media, and I've already received offers not only of time, but also of tools and supplies. This area actually has a disc golf club of 98 members that combines the Gilroy and Morgan Hill communities, neither of which has a course. As a substitute teacher, I see a huge potential for a youth club as well. A teacher friend of mine at Ceravista Elementary School in Hollister has 25 to 30 students a week staying after school for the Disc Golf Club. Local businesses can also play a pivotal role in supporting our disc golf course. Many businesses recognize the value of aligning with recreational facilities like this one through T-PAD sponsorship. Sponsorship opportunities can be mutually beneficial, where businesses get exposure and a chance to engage with the community, and the city benefits from their financial support. I urge the city council to seriously consider the benefits of this disc golf course for Gilroy and explore this opportunity to enrich the lives of our residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, are there any other speakers?
No other speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, moving on to reports of council members. Councilmember Bracco? Councilmember Armendaris?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Let's see, our meeting from the Habitat Agency was postponed until next month, but I did want to recognize September 15th through October 15th as Hispanic Heritage Month, where we recognize and honor the current and historical contributions of Hispanic people to our community and to our country. Thank you.
Councilmember Marks?
No report.
Councilmember Hilton?
Thank you. From the Valley Transportation Authority Policy Advisory Committee, we had a report on the Equitable Vehicle Miles Travel Mitigation Program Grant Project. California recently shifted from focusing on vehicular congestion level of service, or LOS, to the total amount of driving called VMT for transportation analysis under CEQA. The goal of the project is to develop the framework for an equitable program to reduce the amount of driving from land use developments in Santa Clara County that works across jurisdictional lines and improves travel options. The project is focusing on equity in both the process and the outcome. Since the project commenced in May 2023, VTA has been working closely with its consultant team and project partner to document existing needs, VMT mitigation practices, coordinate with local jurisdiction staff, and prepare for community engagement activities. The program grant aligns with VTA's business line of delivering projects and programs by developing the framework for a program that facilitates the funding and implementation of VMT-reducing strategies such as inactive transportation improvements, transit signal priority efforts, and transportation demand management measures. Over the next several years, VTA will be taking a leadership role in helping provide resources and technical assistance to its member agencies on the implementation of SB 743, and member agencies have been coordinating with VTA and working on their implementation. From Silicon Valley Clean Energy, at the board meeting, Board of Directors meeting, staff provided an update on the 2022 greenhouse gas emissions inventory. The board also approved the strategic focus areas to establish priorities for the year ahead and adopted the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. Each year, SPC measures energy and transportation emissions in its service territory to track progress towards the agency's board-adopted greenhouse gas reduction goals. For 2022, SPC sought a 23% reduction compared to 2015 levels, and the inventory showed a return of transportation emissions near pre-pandemic levels. The board adopted the strategic focus areas for the organization, which informs the agency's strategic work plan for its staff as well as for its budget. The focus for 2023-2024 are expand clean and reliable grid actions, expand customer base and interaction, accelerate building and transportation electrification, implement innovative financing solutions, and attract and retain employees. The board approved the SPC operating budget with the expectation of maintaining a discount to PG&E rates, offering an additional discount to income-qualified customers, and making positive contributions to the agency's financial reserves. Lastly, the Santa Clara County Supervisors approved the development of an agricultural worker housing work plan that explores bringing on a consultant who specializes in agricultural worker housing reform, strategies that utilize county land, including the creation of a farmworker resource center, pilot programs to reduce obstacles to private development, legislative and partnership strategies, and more. The administration will return in 90 days to implement direction from the board, which will advance the principles of racial equity, improve agricultural sustainability, and prioritize our dedicated farmworkers. This will also enhance Gilroy's Housing Plan Program E7, which is the Development and Conservation of Housing for Farmworkers, where we will protect the 56 farmworker housing units that we currently have and produce a minimum of 50 more units. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
No report.
Councilmember Tovar?
No report.
Okay, from VTA Mobility Partnership, I just have one thing. I think everyone knows that the 10125 interchange has been funded, anticipated for construction to begin in 2024 and completed in 2027. That's Phase 1. Phase 2 is what includes the Santa Teresa Extension. I had a meeting with Dr. Avila, who is the president of Gavelin College, and we're going to meet together end of this month with some of our state representatives to help to see if we can expedite the funding to start the environmental clearance process on that Phase 2, in hopes that we don't end up with too much time between Phase 1 and Phase 2, because Phase 1 is closing off all access to Gavelin College and Santa Teresa, South Santa Teresa Boulevard, and will require everyone to lose Lucesa in the meantime. So what we're working on, wish us luck, going from there. Okay, under council correspondence, we have none. Under future council-initiated items?
Mayor?
I know we have some. Yes, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you. We recently received a letter from our Local Firefighters Association, Local 2805, regarding an SOC report presented to council with some recommendations. And this includes staffing a fully-staffed fourth fire station at the Glen Loma development. There were some concerns that were raised about achieving minimum staffing requirements that I would like to confer on. Therefore, I would like to make a request to add this discussion, this topic, in a closed session at our next council meeting on October 2nd.
Okay. So the request is to have a closed session on this item at our next council meeting?
Why would it need a closed session?
I believe it does need to be a closed session, yeah, because we have an MOU with them, and this kind of has to do with what other MOU standards. So, okay. Okay, it receives enough support, yeah.
Thank you.
It's not, it doesn't have to be unanimous. Okay, great. And I'm sure there are others?
Yeah. I'd also like to. So, given that we are in Constitution Week, I think it would be a genuine, sincere gesture in honor of our democracy and the participation of our citizenry if we would agendize the report from the Open Government Commission on their study of hybrid meetings.
Okay, so, does that have support? Okay, it has, it has majority support. So that will come before the council, to have the Open Government Commission make their presentation. Okay, any others? All right, moving on to 7.1, Board and Commission Interviews. Ty, do you want to give a report on this, or do you want me just to go into it?
You can go ahead. There's no sense of staff report for this.
Okay, okay. So, council, we have one open seat, yeah. Well, it's in our packets, but it's one open, yeah, one open seat on the Open Government Commission that expires December 31 of 2024, one open seat on Parks and Rec Commission that expires 12/31/25, two seats on the Personnel Commission expiring 12/31/26, and those are the commissions that we have applications for. So tonight, we have, well, we have received 10, total of 10 applications, six for the one year remaining, one year and possibly one meeting remaining of the government, Open Government Commission, three for the Parks and Rec Commission, and one for the Personnel Commission. Could I ask, please, the applicants who are present for any of these commissions to please come sit in the, in the front row, the very front row? So I see, okay, three. Yeah, you're fine. No, you're fine there, but that's just three. Are there, are any of the other 10, any of the other 17 here? Okay, so we have three people present. All right, then, you know what? Go ahead and sit, yeah, three of you. Okay, maybe with just the three of you, I'll just go start on one side and then start on the other side and ask you to just introduce yourself, ask you to say what commission you are applying for, and what you think is most important for us to hear. We all have your applications, so hopefully everybody has read those. So you can reiterate what you choose or accentuate what you wish, and then we'll see if the council has any questions.
Okay. My name's Dale Davis, and I'm applying for the Parks and Recreation Commissioner job. I moved here from San Jose in December to be with my, to relocate to be with my family. All my family lives down here, and I lived in San Jose, basically in the same house for 50 years, and decided to make the change. And with that, I just retired from a 40-year career in private and public construction and development, and feel I have a lot to give. I got a lot left in the tank. I'm an early retiree, and I have a lot of knowledge in the inside-out, the building of parks through the private sector work that I did developing, you know, major home developments, and also worked for four years in the Campbell School District with parks and with construction there. Have a really good grasp of what it takes to budget things as far as those, those things go, and I, I just welcome the opportunity to serve, give something back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, go ahead.
My name is Akur of Varadharajan, and I'm a Gilroy resident for the last eight years, and I've been kind of looking at city council meetings and the vacancies in the Open Government Commission and other commissions. And I'm here for two of the commissions, I believe, applied, the Open Government Commission and the Personnel Commission. My background is basically in school finance. I was the chief financial officer for schools for over 20 years in California, overseeing budget operations as well as the facilities and any other ancillary operations to the schools. So I have a pretty good grounding in those areas. And I believe that I, like him, I'm an early retiree, and I've been doing a lot of consulting work for the schools and other agencies in California. I do have the time, and I believe that my experience can be valuable in bringing some insight into the commissions if I'm appointed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Hi, my name's Anne Marie McCauley, and I've been a resident of Gilroy since 2004. I'm a business owner, homeowner, and the mother of a 12-year-old daughter. I've attended all the city council meetings in person since January of 2023, except two, which I've viewed online. I've also viewed the Planning Commission meetings, the Open Government meetings, the downtown regular meetings, the LAFCO meeting, which was something else, and state assembly meetings regarding fentanyl crisis, mental health, and housing. I have committed myself to learn everything I can about Gilroy government and become an informed and active citizen. I have reviewed the Gilroy City Code 17A, and will study it extensively this week. I have come to realize the importance of government transparency and can be a steward of these codes even if not chosen for this position. However, I would like to extend my involvement to a commission position, which I would uphold with integrity and dedication.
Thank you very much. Thank you, all three. Okay, I'm going to start looking at our council and see if anybody on the council has a question that you might want to ask for all three to answer. Yes, Councilmember Tovar, and then we'll start with Anne Marie. We'll go the reverse way this time, okay?
Thank you. No, I don't necessarily have a question. I want to thank you all for, for, you know, offering to be part of these commissions. I do sort of have a question. I know Mr. Akur, you applied for two different commissions. I'm just wondering if you, you know, not sure which is your top and which is your second choice, and if your top choice isn't, if you aren't selected, would you be open to the second?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Okay, that was the only question. Okay. Okay, we have your contact information, too, so I know that I certainly would like to speak with all three of you, but that's what we will do between now and the next meeting, when we'll do the appointing. You all did very, I mean, your, your applications were thorough and everything you just said, so that's, I mean, it's about having the time to commit, it's about having the integrity to want to do it, and it's about being dedicated. That's what we need, and so thank you, thank you all for applying. With only three of you, if there are other comments you'd like to make, we have the time. Would you like to say something else?
I have the time.
Yeah, no, that's what I love, right. And, and, right, and so does Akur, too, right? And I don't know how you work and do all those things you said and still attend all those meetings that you said you attend, but more power to you.
Well, I watch, I actually watch the meetings while I design kitchens. It's, it's awesome.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, so I really, and then I take notes, and I ask a bunch of different people that live here what it means. So it's really complicated, what you guys do, and I'm, I'm humbled by it, for sure. So, so I'm working on a four-year bachelor's degree in education of the city of Gilroy. So I'm committing the next four years to intensely paying attention and, and learning about all the things that are going on. And then we'll see what happens.
Okay. All right. Thank, thank you all for being here. Very, very, very much appreciated. Very, very, very much appreciated.
Thank you for listening.
Okay. All right.
Can we ask Ty, I'm sorry? Can we ask Ty a question just about the applicants? Did any others reply or confirm that they would be here tonight and then didn't show?
On Thursday evening, I sent emails out to all the applicants, and I did send them an email invitation to come attend. One did say pending. I do not recall which one it was, but that's to the extent that I did do my diligence in regarding to contact all the other applicants.
On Thursday evening?
Evening. And of course, whenever they submit an application, and I make sure that they are verified as a registered voter within the city of Gilroy, I send them an email responding back that I received their application and when their, when the interviews are being conducted initially for.
So, they know the date in advance, yeah. And I also confirmed with Ty that all of these applications were received on time. Nobody was late with these applications here, so. Okay, that brings us to council training. Yay. Go ahead, Andy. We'll try to look more excited, I know.
Ty, it says the password is incorrect. Try again. See if this will work. Okay, is this working? Mic working?
Yes, mic is working.
Uh, no, this is, uh, yes. Yeah. Okay, well, good evening, council. This is our third training of the year. There are two separate topics, Housing Laws and Public Contracting. What they have in common is they're both highly technical and geeky and therefore a little hard to grasp at some occasions. What I'm going to try to do is give you an overview of both areas here because they come up and they come to your attention, and my goal is not to teach you all the minutia because there is a lot of minutia, a lot of it's hard to remember, but just enough so that when issues come up, you'll recognize, or when staff says, "Look, we have this problem of X or Y," it's something you will have heard about and at least hopefully have a minimal understanding of because it's hard to go much beyond that without spending an awful lot of time, and I'm trying not to do that. Okay, you turn that off, good. Okay, so, the two topics I said are advances in hous, the housing is more topical in the sense that, as you know, there have been lots of new housing laws recently. Public contracting changes less, except that we had our charter amendment last year on Design-Bill, and so, I want to sort of see, show you how that relates to the normal contracting that we do as a city. In terms of the state housing laws, there have been several trends. I'm sure we've all seen them, we've read about them in the paper. One is that the housing element and the enforcement by HCD have gotten stronger and more complex. The process is much more agonizing than it used to be. The state is pushing cities toward increased density and affordability, toward less reliance on our own zoning, taking away local discretion. That's one whole category of things. Another is expedited processing, including the use of checklists, having authorized by cities to have fewer meetings for a project, less SEQA, particularly for affordable projects, and then also reduced parking. So, the housing element laws start there. We've just gone through, our housing element is certified, we've been through that as a city. As you know, each city must include a housing element. When this law first came into effect 50 years ago or so, housing elements were like five or 10 pages long. I had a case once about a city where the housing element was a page and a half long, actually. Now, the Gilroy housing element is more like 350 pages, costs a lot of money, and was a very, is a very complex document. It's reviewed for substantial compliance with state law by HCD, the State Department of Housing and Community Development, and as you know, every eight years, cities have to update it. There's a process where HCD gives overall allocations. A-BAG, our local regional government organization, decides on our RENA numbers, the RHNA numbers, and then each local government has to put that into their housing element, not to build a housing, but to show the state that there is sufficient land available, zoned for suitable densities and free of constraints, so that if developers come along and are willing to build a housing, it can be built to meet the RENA numbers. There's a complex appeal process for the RENA numbers, which some cities have tried. In the most recent cycle, I think all local cities were unsuccessful, pretty much, in doing that. Question comes up, what if the HCD does not certify a city's housing element? Our housing element is certified. It's a complex process. HCD goes back and forth, gives you comments, they take several months. A housing element can still be in substantial compliance with state law. And the leading case, which I've mentioned to the council before, is called Fonseca versus the city of Gilroy, and it's a case where our housing element several cycles ago was challenged. We won that case even though HCD didn't like the housing element at that time because, in fact, it complied with state law. There is something called the Builder's Remedy that I'm sure you've read about in the newspapers that applies under the Housing Accountability Act. If HCD does not certify a housing element, or if the housing element is otherwise not in substantial compliance, then, under certain circumstances, a city can be forced to approve affordable housing projects. It only applies, however, if you don't have a substantial housing element that is in substantial compliance, and Gilroy at this point does. I'm going to go through some other laws now that have been passed in the last sort of 50 years that have, that streamline the process. The Permit Streamlining Act is a matter that rarely comes to the council because it involves permits, entitlements, not zonings or general plans, and it puts strict limits on timing for agencies to decide whether an application is complete, to decide, and actually to approve it. And if it's not approved within those deadlines, in theory, an application can be deemed approved by a court. This very rarely happens, but it is a constraint on the staff. More interesting and something that does come to the council is the Density Bonus Law. This is a law that essentially requires cities to give incentives to developers to develop affordable housing. If you read the statute, Government Code 65915, it goes on for page after page after page, and it has tables that essentially say, if the developer provides a certain percentage of housing at a certain affordability level, then they get a certain percentage of density bonus. In other words, if they were going to build 100 units, they might be able to build 120 instead. There's a sliding scale, and it's quite complex. In addition, developers can ask for things called concessions or incentives or waivers of physical requirements. In other words, they can say, "My affordable project doesn't quite fit into your standard city, but I want to change things. For example, I want more height, I want less open space, I want reduced setbacks, reduced parking, et cetera." There's a whole variety of these kind of things that developers can ask for, and under the Density Bonus Law, cities pretty much have to grant them if they're reasonable requests. There have been occasions where cities have said, "Well, developer, you don't really need this additional height." There was a case in Berkeley where the developer wanted to have 12-foot ceilings, and opponents of the project said, "Well, wait a minute, why do you need 12-foot ceilings? If you only had normal ceilings, you wouldn't need a height waiver." And the court said, "You can't do that. You have to accept the project as it's designed with the amenities it's designed into, that are designed into it." And the city can't redesign the project to say that the developer doesn't need these Finally, the Density Bonus Law gets tinkered with every year, or not every year, but every few years. It got tinkered with last year and a couple of years ago. There are now some, under certain circumstances, where a developer can get an unlimited density bonus. In other words, not, the normal limit had been 35% for many years. That's now got done away with in certain circumstances. It doesn't always happen anyway, however, as we've seen when projects have come to the city here, that often developers don't want a density bonus, or they want a smaller one because it just doesn't work in the project. But nonetheless, this is a law that the cities have to follow, and it's designed to incentivize affordable housing, and has done an effective job, I think statewide, over the years in doing that. The Housing Accountability Act is kind of the biggest hammer of most of these laws. It essentially says the city has to have objective standards, and of course, we have recently passed objective zoning and building standards. We did that mainly because the Housing Accountability Act says, "That's all you can apply." Somebody comes in with a project, you can't say it's too big, or it isn't Gilroy, or we don't like the shape and scale of things, unless we have objective rationales that support those statements. They have to be objective. Interestingly, as you know, for most decisions that a city makes, the city gets deference if they're challenged in court. So, most city kinds of decisions, if there's substantial evidence that supports the position the city took, even if there's more evidence on the other side, and somebody could say, "Well, you have a very weak position," but if there's just some substantial evidence and it's reasonable, that will be upheld by courts. That's been the general rule for years. With the Housing Accountability Act and now with other housing laws, that rule's been reversed. So, the rule now is if there's enough evidence in the record that a reasonable person could think that the development is consistent with your standards, then it is consistent. So, this has led to the anomalous situation where a lawyer for a developer will stand up in court and say, "Your honor, I'm a reasonable person. I think, I think it's consistent, and that's all you need." It's a strange, it's a complete reversal of the standard of proof, but it shows how the state law is pushing against the cities. Accessory dwelling units are another aspect of laws, you know, and a couple of years ago, in fact, the state kind of high-handedly established a new ADU law in September and then said to us and other cities, "You have to have an ordinance in effect in early January or it's going to be invalid," giving the city very little time to adapt and develop its own ordinance. ADUs, as we know, are independent living facilities. Junior ADUs are actually inside a structure. The cities can have their own ordinance. We have one in Gilroy where we've imposed certain standards. They have to be approved ministerially, and ADUs have, in fact, according to studies, been very effective in providing affordable housing. You see many ADUs being built, particularly with new developments, and they are essentially affordable by design because they're smaller units. Okay, the state didn't stop with ADUs and the Housing Accountability Act. In 2019, SB 330 was passed, the Housing Crisis Act. This one is mainly aimed at process. For example, you'll see it has a five hearings rule. So, there are cities, not Gilroy fortunately, where a developer will go to the Planning Commission, have the project approved, then go to council, the council will make a few tweaks, send it back to the Planning Commission, goes back to council, yo-yos three or four times. That results in many, many months of delay, can be years of delay. That's now pretty much done away with by the five hearing rule, which says that a city can have no more than five hearings at all levels, I mean, when you aggregate them at all levels on a project. It also creates a checklist and basically forces the staff to find an application complete if it has the required elements, even if the staff really doesn't like it. And again, it was designed for a situation where in some cities, staff would hem and haw and not find applications to be complete for a year or more because they basically didn't like the application. That's now more or less done away with. This law has just been extended through 2030. Okay, SB 9, we're going to talk about, I have several slides, I'll just talk about briefly because it doesn't seem to be going very far in the state, and particularly not in Gilroy. SB 9 is the law that I'm sure you've all read about that sometimes is called the end of single-family zoning. And that indeed is the legislative purpose. That's a Scott Wiener of San Francisco pushed this really hard, and he doesn't like single-family zoning, and the idea is to basically get rid of it. There are two components to SB 9. One is that on a single-family lot, the city must approve two houses, assuming certain physical things can be met. And it's a ministerial approval, so it's not something I can go to the council, it's not something that is covered by SEQA. The houses have to comply with certain objective standards, but within that scope, a city pretty much has to approve two houses in a single-family residential zone. The second aspect is an urban lot split, which is similar, which says, within certain, again, parameters, a city must approve a lot split into two lots of a single-family lot. The lots have to be roughly the same size, they don't have to be very big. Each lot has to be at least 1,200 square feet, which is a pretty darn small lot, and they must comply with objective standards, and there's some other requirements that you see here. But nonetheless, again, the idea is to encourage people to split lots. We haven't seen this in Gilroy particularly, but in theory, this is, this is going to be happening around the state. This is a technical slide on how many units you can get under SB 9. It's very complicated and a little unclear, but the general idea is that in a single-family zone, a person, if they play their cards right and use the proper applications, should be able to build four houses, or a combination of houses in ADUs. Finally, parking. This has been a big concern of neighborhoods. Well, with all these units, what about cars? Everybody in California drives. Cities can require no more than one off-street parking space per unit, and there's this requirement, we've talked about this in some other projects, I think, that no off-street parking can be required if the lot is located within a half mile of what's called a high-quality transit corridor, and these are defined terms having to do with bus headways and things like that, a major transit stop, or within one block of a car-share vehicle. The last term is not defined, it probably means a painted designated car-share parking space. I've never really understood the concept here. The idea is, of course, to force, excuse me, the idea is to require less parking if there's public transit available. That's the general concept. But car-share vehicles come and go, who knows what'll be there a few years from now, and the same can happen, in fact, if VTA changes the bus routes. But regardless, this is the point of the law, is to reduce the amount of parking. SB 10 came into effect two years ago also. It allows certain upzonings. I'm not going to go into it because it's never, it has not come to Gilroy's attention. I don't want to encourage it particularly, but it allows a certain kind of upzoning with permission. This one's more interesting, AB 2011 and SB 6. These just went into effect this year, and they allow, under certain circumstances, residential development on commercial properties. It's quite interesting. AB 2011 is only for 100% affordable projects, and it's ministerial, meaning that it's exempt from SEQA, and in general, again, if it complies with certain objective standards, a project would have to be approved. SB 6 is a little broader. It's not ministerial, but it also allows residential projects, which don't have to be affordable, to be built in commercially-zoned property. There are a lot of caveats to this, but this is something, these are laws that many cities are experiencing now, laws just went into effect. One of the trade-offs in the state legislature is that for AB 2011, prevailing wages are required on such a project. For SB 6, essentially, union labor is required, a skilled and trained workforce is the way the statutes read. So, that was a trade-off to get these bills passed through the labor lobbies. So, we may expect to see applications under SB 6 in Gilroy as well as elsewhere. Okay, that eliminates housing. If anybody has any questions, by the way, I'm happy to be interrupted, but that's...
Andy, I have one on SB 330. Could you please go back to that slide?
Okay.
It's very confusing. It sounds like double talk, you know, and how that law is written.
Okay.
Okay, it's the first part. Say I buy a piece of land and I decide to put housing on it, and I fill out my preliminary application, and it's deemed complete. I don't understand what it means when it says freezes rules and policies in effect at the time of preliminary application. What rules and policies is that talking about?
They're talking about the general city zoning, objective land use policies, and so on. The idea is that if you submit the preliminary application, you then have 180, and the city says it's complete, you then have 180 days to submit a formal application. You don't have to do it, you could just let it drop, but if you do, the rules that the city applies are not newer rules. They, it goes back to the time when your application was deemed complete to begin with. That's what that means.
Oh, okay, so, if, so whatever my piece of land is zoned as, that applies once it's deemed complete?
Generally, yes.
Okay.
That's the general idea, that cities can't change the rules kind of in midstream on a project. That's the concept here.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right.
Can I piggyback on that because I think I know what she's getting at? It's saying that the city's rules are what's frozen, not the preliminary application. That's what we had at our last, the last coffee event here. We had residents misunderstanding that.
Yes, although, if a preliminary application is deemed complete and then six, within six months, a formal application is filed, it has to be similar to the preliminary one, obviously. You can't, they can't... obviously, you can't, they can't change it in great detail, and then go back and say, well, your rules are frozen because of the preliminary.
Understood, yes, understood.
I have a question.
Yes.
Regarding the builder's remedy, Andy, I understand that there's two projects that were able to apply under this law when our housing element had not yet been approved. Can you tell me how, I understand that one of them is going to include affordable units, but the other, I didn't imagine it to be so. Can you talk about more how those get passed, or how those...
Well, the, yeah, I don't want to go into the specifics of the two projects, they have to include affordable units to be under the builder's remedy, so that that has to happen. And I think the the issue there is, is that our housing element, in fact, is substantially compliant, and we believe was substantially compliant as of May 1st. These were submitted thereafter, we may get into a, an issue about that, that question.
Because we submitted it and we believed it was compliant, but the state didn't...
That's right, and HCD, HCD gave us some comments, we we adopted it with minor modifications, which we don't think affected the compliance of it, however. We may get into an issue over that, we don't know yet. We don't know if that's going to become a point of contention, or how these applications are going to come out. They haven't been formally applied yet, neither one of them, so.
Okay.
We'll see what happens with them. I don't want to go any further on that because these are obviously legal matters on specific applications, and there may be a lot of detail.
Okay. And then the bill that Senator Weiner passed, I know you mentioned, or your comment was that he, he didn't like single-family zoning. Just want to clarify that, neither did the rest of the legislature because they passed it. It wasn't just a one-man show or a one-man vote.
Well, I I guess you could have, it did pass, so it got a majority vote, that's correct.
Sure did, thank you.
Yeah, but I mean, he was, he was the one who was vocal about it and saying this was...
Yeah, he was the author, correct.
Yeah, right, and he, and he has been doing that, he had several SB 50 bills that were defeated over the years that he's also pushed, so he's he's clearly an advocate for higher-density multifamily zoning.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, let me move on to the second half of the training, public contracting. We're going to talk about, again, some some detailed laws, but there are, there are various sources of public contracting load, lar, law, excuse me. There's a government code, the labor code, something called the public contract code, as you might expect, and the city's purchasing policy. And I want to draw a distinction, but there are two kinds of things that are often confused, I'm going to talk about it a little bit. One is a public project, and that relates to bidding. And the second is a public work. And public works and public contracts, as used in this context, are different. Public works has to do with whether prevailing wages have to be paid or not. So public projects, a public project is basically what you would expect, it's a more or less a construction project, certain maintenance projects as well, including, for example, street and sewer work. Generally, it's building a building, repairing a building, painting a building. Those are all classic public projects of the sort that may be subject to competitive Our charter, oh, sorry, this is an old version. Our charter requires public bidding for $200,000, it says $60,000 here, I thought I had changed that, but I think I have an old version here. The charter now, as of the charter amendment last fall, requires public bidding on public projects above $200,000. That $200,000 is a reference to state law, which contains that number, so that number may change over the years. The previous charter required public bidding for projects over $35,000, which is really not reasonable in today's climate. And public bidding is a highly formal process, we, it it only comes to the council typically at the very end, when a contract is awarded. Under that process, the contract has to be advertised. In fact, how it's advertised was also changed in the charter because the charter previously, which dates back to 1960, had said that projects must be advertised in daily newspapers of general circulation. Well, there aren't very many of those anymore, the Dispatch doesn't qualify anymore. It's a newspaper of general circulation, but not a daily. So advertising in the Dispatch or the Mercury is still encouraged, but also various kinds of electronic advertising that have come to the fore are now allowed. Once the contract is advertised, the city accepts bids on a certain deadline, late bids are not accepted. The award must be to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. Responsive means that they filled out the the form properly, they've covered everything, they've listed their subcontractors, whatever requirements they've agreed to, they haven't taken exception to the contract, things like that. Responsible bidder means that they they meet the requirements of the contract in terms of whatever the responsible requirements are, like their their experience and prior contracts, things of that nature. And there has to be a protest procedure, because every so often, the second bidder will say, wait a minute, the first guy's bid is wrong. Or the the lowest bidder will say, wait, I need to correct an error, it's only a clerical error, I should be allowed to correct it. And the second person, the second highest, lowest bidder may say, we disagree, it's a substantive error, you shouldn't be allowed to correct it. So we've been involved occasionally in cases like that in Gilroy. And it's, as I say, it's a technical area, which is actually spelled out in considerable detail in our purchasing policy. So the purpose of the charter amendment last fall was to allow the city to also, in addition to public bidding, use a process called design-build contracting, which is a a system that of contracting that basically did not exist when the charter was originally written. It applies to public works projects over $1 million, and it has a two-step procurement process. The request for qualifications is issued, and so design-build entities are pre-qualified. And the idea is that the design-build entity will both design and build the project to some degree at the same time. Obviously, you have to have plans when you build things, but they will develop the plans and do the construction. And under certain circumstances, if the project is well-managed and well-designed, this can save money and time. The award of, the city's award then is based either on the lowest bid or best value, which doesn't necessarily have to be the lowest bid, it can take into effect various other aspects of the proposals and and lifetime costs and so on. To do this kind of contracting, again, requires a skilled and trained workforce under state law, that's another one of these compromises that the state has forced on us. And as I said, our our charter amendment last fall allows that, the city council has to make a finding that it will result in a faster contract completion or save money. And if we do that, then we can go ahead and use that for major projects. Okay, I said I was going to talk about public projects and public works. So public projects were what we were just talking about, construction projects. Public works is a broader concept, and it applies to the requirement to pay prevailing wages. It's generally defined, as I say here, as construction, alteration, demolition, installation under repair work, done under contract and paid for in whole and or in part out of public funds. The definition is broader, and there are some oddball things, for example, laying of carpet in buildings is specifically public works. There's no obvious reason why laying of carpet has been singled out, but it's in the statute. And other kinds of things also, for example, there is a public works requirement for works done, working, work done for reclamation districts and and certain kinds of sewer districts. A case came out recently saying that the people on a recycling line, in other words, a conveyor belt's going along, and there are people who stand near it and pick off recycles, recyclables and put them in containers, that's prevailing wage, when, even if it's done by a, it's not done by a city. So that's kind of one of these oddball things, it's a much broader concept. And so there are construction jobs in which public bidding is not required, but payment of prevailing wage is required. The projects must be done under contract, they don't have to be done by the city, the contract can be by a private entity, but if the city contributes money to it, that can turn it into a public work subject to prevailing wage. And there are various ways this can happen. For example, the last bullet point here, I mean, obviously, the first bullet point is the city actually pays money, but the last one is fees, costs, rents, insurance premiums, et cetera, are waived or reduced. This is an issue with development impact fees that the city charges. For example, when we have had occasion, those of you who've been on the council for a while will remember this, to reduce fees downtown, we didn't reduce fees or waive them, we established new fees. We took, here was the old fee, we said we now have a new fee, because we didn't want an allegation to be made that that was a fee reduction that would benefit, or a fee waiver that would benefit certain projects being built, because those projects could arguably then be turned into prevailing wage projects. So the city, we always have to be careful if there's any city subsidy that it's clearly defined and it's limited, or an entire project becomes a prevailing wage project, that would otherwise be a private project. Another example, the first bullet point here, if an agency requires a private developer to perform construction work, which would be public work, that can turn an entire large project into a prevailing wage project, into a public work. An example of that was something came a few years ago involving stores just south of 152, south of the outlets, where they had to build a street extension, but they also had a shopping center. The city was paying for the street extension because it was in our capital improvement program. So we had to be careful, however, that there was a contract for the street extension that was with the developer, because they were doing it kind of a little more efficiently at the same time they built the shopping center. But it had to be a separate contract from the the contract for the rest of the shopping center, and the amount of city money was only the amount of money necessary to pay for the street. So the street, in essence, was a public work, but the rest of the center was not a public work because of the way it was divided up. One final aspect of this, just for your information, because we're a charter city, there are cases that say that certain kinds of public works that we do are really local, they're not of statewide importance. If they're not of statewide importance, they're not subject to state prevailing wage laws, as I've, the kind I've been talking about. So for example, if if the city builds a swimming pool for local residents, for example, or does sidewalk repair, not along an interstate highway or not along a state route, those would be characterized as local municipal projects that, according to this case that came out, were not subject to prevailing wage. However, when that case came out, the state turned around and said, well, that's fine, you don't have to pay prevailing wage, but if you don't, you're not going to get any state funding for a whole variety of projects that you want. And that's what SB 7 is, SB 7 said, cities, if you want to, charter cities, if you want to take the position that some of your projects are purely local, and therefore not subject to prevailing wage, you're not going to get state funding. So Gilroy, along with most other cities in the state, passed what we call an SB 7 ordinance, which means that our, all of our public works are subject to prevailing wage, even if they are very local and not not statewide. There are exceptions, which I have here mentioned, which is $25,000 project, a project less than $25,000 for construction, or less than $15,000 for street, for sidewalk or maintenance repair, are not prevailing wage. We got into this with, into this issue actually with the sidewalk repair program that the city has had for years, where it would pay a homeowner's a portion of the repair costs to fix their sidewalks. And the question was that those become prevailing wage projects or not. Okay, a few more topics briefly. City's purchasing property, I mentioned earlier, it's a manual, it was just been revised, it's very clear and well-written and well-done. It covers all of this kind of law that I've been talking about, it has very detailed procedures for how public bidding is done. For example, it includes a code of conduct and ethics for city employees, and it spells out very clearly what the city's requirements are for both procurement of goods and services, and also public contracting. An example, to give you, I'm almost, almost done here, but I want to give an example of the kind of disputes you can run into that are subject to these contracts, and that's our own police building. And the police building, the original bids were way over, well, several million dollars over the engineer's estimates of what it should cost. The city did not want to pay the additional money, asked the architect to redesign the building, which they did by lowering a floor, which is why it has the shape it had originally in the architectural design, was, well, I guess it's a subjective feeling, but it was a grander-looking building because it had another floor on top of it. That was eliminated, so the architects redid their plans. It went out to bid, the bids came in at a reasonable number this time. But when the contractor built the building, they claimed to find, and I think they were justified, a great many mistakes in the plans. So they found that the architect in redoing the plans had made many errors, and so the project ended up costing more. We turned around and sued the architects for malpractice, which is a very difficult lawsuit. We ended up with a $2 million settlement. And in that case, as I mentioned here, I think we were protected because we had a good contract, both with the contractor and with the architect. And the interesting question that I kind of raised here is, if it had been a design-build project, what would have happened? They might have been able to build it for the original price, I don't know, it's it's kind of speculative here, but it points out that for a project like that, there might be a reason why a design-build process could be better or not. But it also points out the need to have good contracting, no matter, no matter what you're doing, go through the process. If you do a public bidding process, do it in a formal way that's very solid, as we did in this case. Okay, last topic is Section 1090. This prevents public officials who are financially interested in a contract from entering into them in the body that they sit on, like the city council. It also applies to city staff. And it includes a variety of contracts that that, sometimes you don't really think are contracts, and it includes, it sweeps up some people in it that you don't think should be swept up. Under certain circumstances, a, an official has a non-interest, for example, if they're on the board of a nonprofit, they don't have a financial interest. But if there is a financial interest, that can apply to council members, it can apply to staff, it can apply to consultants. And my last slide here, really, is an interesting case study that rose out of Pleasanton, and we had, we've had the similar issues in Gilroy a couple of times where we've had to think about this, where, for example, the city wants to revamp some big engineering system that it has in its buildings or its land, and let's say they hire a company that has a consulting arm and an engineering arm. If they hire the consulting arm first, and that consulting arm spends a lot of money studying the thing, and then comes up with the specs for the new contract, if that contract goes to the engineering arm, that would be a 1090 violation, and the consultant is held to have violated 1090. It's very interesting, it's something you don't think about typically, because that consultant is not a city employee, but for the purpose of this contracting, they're treated that way, because the argument is that that kind of vitiates the public bidding process, because they got a leg up since their own people designed the project. This happened in Pleasanton here, this is the subject of a long FPPC opinion that we we mentioned there. Okay, that completes my quick tour of public contracting, public bidding, and the new housing laws. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, council, any questions? Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
Very much. I had one of my professors say to me in college that education is the one thing that people will pay a lot of money for, but hope to get less of. It's like something on top, when we're being trained or being in class. Okay, item nine, that brings us to the consent calendar. Are there any council members wishing to remove an item from consent? Okay, do we have any public comments on any item on the consent calendar?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay, then...
For approval?
All right, we have a motion to approve...
I'll second.
Second, approve, motion to approve by Councilwoman Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Marks. And it is digital voting. Okay, and that passes unanimously. All right, item 10, 10.1, award the purchase and replacement of the fire department's inventory of self-contained breathing apparatus for the total amount of $850,360, utilizing Sourcewell's Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 032620. And Chief Wyatt, Fire Chief Wyatt, is going to give us this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilwoman.
There we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, so, and if I could just add a second part to that, in addition to awarding the purchase and replacement of the fire department's self-contained breathing apparatus, also to authorize the city administrator to execute and, execute the purchase contract documents. I'll just give you a quick executive summary. In fiscal year '24, the budget was approved by council on June 5th, 2023, that includes the replacement of the fire department's inventory of self-contained breathing apparatus, SCBAs. The fire department is a, is in need of, or is is in need of, sorry, is in critical need of replacing the department's 15-year-old SCBAs. This mission critical personal protective equipment is vital to protecting firefighters and citizens dur- is vital to protecting firefighters and citizens during structured fires and other emergency responses requiring SCBAs. Approval of this purchase with Ellen Curtis via Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 032620 in the amount of $850,000 will allow the department to equip its firefighters with safer PPE that utilizes advanced technology that increases the firefighter's safety during fire-related emergencies. The cooperative purchasing is an authorized, thank you. The cooperative purchasing is an authorized procurement method within the city's purchasing policy. It is encouraged as a way of obtaining goods and services as it aggregates volume and secures value pricing. The city is an active member of Sourcewell Cooperative. In addition to Ellen Curtis's Sourcewell contract for PPE, the vendor is also offering to buy one and get one free pricing for SCBA tanks and harness compliments, as well as buy three and get one free special on their LUNAR, which stands for Location, Unit, Name, Assignment, Air Status, and Resources. It's an advanced technology system that's used to help locate down firefighters and victims. This additional discount will save the city $97,136. However, the offer expires on September 29, 2023. Just to fast forward, the alternatives, the alternative would be to conduct a direct public bid process. However, staff does not recommend this method given that the Sourcewell Cooperative Purchase Process is more efficient, secures competitive pricing, and the vendor's SCBA already meets the needs of the Gilroy Fire Department. If council does not approve this purchase through the Sourcewell contract with Ellen Curtis, the department will be required to conduct a lengthy direct bid, thus not being able to take advantage of the additional discount, approximately $97,000, offered by Ellen Curtis. Fiscal impact and funding source, the expenditure of this procurement is included in the adopted fiscal year 24 budget within the Fire Department, or Fire Operation Division in the General Fund 13510. A total of $880,000 is appropriate for this procurement, and the equipment cost is approximately $850,000, resulting in a budgetary savings of approximately $30,000. If approved, staff will create a purchase order for $850,000 to place the order, and funds will be paid out at the time of delivery. Next steps, upon council approval, a purchase order will be prepared and finalized the purchase before September 29, 2023, to take advantage of the vendor's additional discount. Fire staff will receive the equipment within 120 days of placing the order, and the vendor will provide training on the equipment. Once training is complete, the current SCBAs will be removed from all fire apparatus, and the new SCBAs will be placed into service. And I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Chief. All right, council members, I'll go to you first. I don't see anybody on my board. Okay, Councilmember Tovar.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, thank you for this report. And, you know, I will be supporting this. But I have a question, because it leads to a question I'm going to have from city staff. I saw or read somewhere that a lot of fire departments are changing, I know this is for breathing apparatuses, but a lot of fire departments are changing the fire gear because a lot of it has cancer-causing chemicals. Have you, is that, have you heard anything about that? Or is that even a concern?
Yes, we've heard about it. We've seen a class action suit actually being forwarded. Unfortunately, we have no alternatives that we can turn to. But I know that the industry, particularly the fire departments in particular, but the industry in general is looking at that very thing to see what sort of alternatives could be provided.
Okay, thank you. My question, this is for staff, so I don't know who, Jimmy, or I'm not sure who I'm going to ask this question to. But, you know, and again, I know that this has already been budgeted, obviously, and, you know, again, I support it. But I wanted to ask, is the city also pursuing any grant money that might be available to help, you know, purchase, you know, future equipment for our fire and police? In my day job, obviously, I do a lot of research on different grants, and I've noticed there's several out there. So I want to know if we, as a city, are applying for any grant money.
I'll give you, Mr. Tovar, I'll give you a general answer. We do retain the services of a consultant company that helps us look for those grants. They are paid a monthly fee, and they've had some great success. But I'll defer to Chief about any specific fire grants for this type of equipment and what they've seen out there.
Yes, as a matter of fact, we did apply for grant funding for the SCBAs as well as the compressor used to fill the air bottles. So the grant finally reported back to us just earlier in the month, and they denied our request for the SCBAs, but they gave us the additional amount that we needed for replacing the air compressor.
Good, and again, I just want to make sure that we're utilizing that service, obviously, because as you know, you know, a city to the east or the north of us, you know, miss an opportunity for several, you know, grant opportunity money. And I want to make sure we, as a city, are being proactive, so, thank you.
Yeah, we try to do that wherever it's possible, and it becomes available to us.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Councilmember Armandaris.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief. I'm wondering if the cost of training and ongoing maintenance of the equipment is part of the cooperative, or is it part of the $850,000?
So we did talk to the vendor, Ellen Curtis, and they said they would train approximately three technicians, firefighters to be technicians, so that they could provide the maintenance and some of the minor repairs needed for the SCBAs. But that definitely was a consideration for us.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, seeing no other questions from council, I'd like to go to public comment. I don't see any on my board.
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment.
Move for approval.
Okay. So that's a motion by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Armandaris to award the purchase and replacement of the fire department's self-contained breathing apparatus, personal protective equipment, to Ellen Curtis in the amount of $850,360, utilizing Sourcewell's Cooperative Purchasing Contract Number 032620, and to authorize the city administrator to execute the purchase contract documents. All right, that passes unanimously. Item 11, public hearings, we have none. Item 12, unfinished business, 12.1.
Excuse me, just real quick, on behalf of the fire department, we're very appreciative of all the support that you provide. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, approval of consulting and reimbursement agreement between the City of Gilroy and Sharks Ice LLC. Jimmy, are you, or is Bryce, sorry, here?
Yeah, I'm here. Think about it, Mayor, members of the city council. This is the third item in the last month that you are considering for the Sharks Ice Rink. This is a consulting and reimbursement agreement in the amount of $270,000. And this is what I'd call the last step in the pre-planning phase. Previously, you approved the reimbursement agreement for the bonds, and then you approved the hiring of Will Perkins for the architectural design. This is a significant step in the process because this essentially turns over the project manager from the city over to the Sharks. And this is a good idea on our part because we've never built an ice rink before. We don't know how to operate them, and we would be really bad project managers. So giving it to the Sharks, who have just completed a massive project near downtown San Jose, gives us a lot of ability to piggyback on their expertise. They just finished the building of two more ice sheets at their major facility, which is now over 400,000 square feet. And so our 100,000-square-feet building, which includes two NHL-sized rinks, will benefit from their guidance and really their management of the project. It's also advantageous for the city to have the Sharks do this as they will be the operators of the facility as well, and they will secure the debt for the project. So they are highly motivated to provide a good product for the community that meets the budget and is also completed on time. There is an attachment to this staff report that shows the schedule, and it's the first time we've seen an actual project schedule. And so you could reference that. But this shows that the design and such will take about a year, with actual groundbreaking of the ice rink about a year away. You will see activity out by the sports park for the things that the city has to do, which includes some road improvements, some infrastructure utility improvements as well that gets the rink ready. We're also engaging PG&E very early on to make sure we don't have a finished building that needs a connection. So with this agreement, we will execute with the Sharks for the next 18 months to be our consultant at $15,000 a month. That is a not-to-exceed amount. And they are also responsible, if they don't make that timeline, they wouldn't receive any more funds for consulting. So I'm happy to recommend this. This will get us on our way with the Sharks and get a real professional project manager in place who has a really good track record of results. So that concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Thank you very much. Yeah, the schedule is on page 23 of the 26-page report. Yeah, it's pretty nice to have. Okay, anyone on the council with questions before I go to the public? Yes, Councilmember Klein.
Real quick, we have a project manager too, right? And they'll work with the Sharks, but mainly on our infrastructure work that we have to put in place for the project, or?
Yes, Mr. Klein, we have Mr. Carl Bjarke, who's the interim Public Works Director. We actually brought him on board to be the project manager. We had a vacancy, so he's filling in. So our intent is, once we get the Public Works Director job filled, he'll go back to his role as the city's basic civil engineer, which is what he is. He can do the utility work, the infrastructure, doesn't have experience building an ice rink per se, but can help the city keep an eye on our own cost.
It's nice to see the schedule with the design, and then the bidding out, and then the project being done. So I mean, it's aggressive, but I think in the whole point of design-build, that gives you that flexibility, so that's cool.
I agree.
Question? Yes, yes, Councilmember Armandaris.
Is this public works or public project? So is it subject to prevailing wage?
It's subject to everything.
Great, glad to hear.
This will, might be the second-most expensive project in the city's history. I think maybe the police station went a little bit higher. But they're all prevailing wage, prevailing project.
Built by skilled professional workers.
Absolutely.
Yep, as was just evidence in our training that, yeah, we just said, for, yeah, for design-build. Okay, I don't see any, but do we have any public comments?
No speaker cards, Madam Mayor.
Okay, closing public comment, yes.
I'd like to make, or move for a motion for approval. There's two parts, right? First one is to approve the agreement with the Sharks for $270,000 for consulting services. And in part two is to authorize the city administrator to execute the contract with minor modifications if needed.
Those can be one motion, right?
Yeah, okay, one motion, okay.
Okay, so that motion was made by Councilmember Tovar and seconded by Councilmember Armandaris. You guys are on a roll. All right, voting.
I messed up my screen, Mayor, but I vote yes.
Okay. As long as the city clerk gets that.
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Okay, so, yay, unanimous. All right. Introduction of new business, this is 13.1. Okay, report on measures taken to improve the condition of Los Anamos Park, including safety and crime prevention. And the staff report is going to come from Bryce Atkins.
Excuse me, Mayor and council. As mentioned, the city owns and operates Los Anamos Veterans Park. It's a 31-acre park off of Mantelli. Staff did close the Wayland Lane and Hannah Street community entrance parking lots back on March 16 of 2023 after a series of complaints from residents, including public comments to the council beginning back in August of 2022. A report activities and incidents in the parking lots include, amongst others, assault, nudity, and indecent exposure, suspicious vehicles in persons, burglary, drugs and drug paraphernalia, among other crimes and nuisance activities. And the staff report is a more detailed history. The key takeaways include that there were engagement with multiple site visits, meetings and correspondence with local residents surrounding the parking lots, email at the council, procuring and installing a locking gate, and adjustment to Los Anamos Veterans Park's closing hours per Parks and Recreation Commission recommendations. There was continued engagement after the parking lots were closed, including community meeting back on March 28, and city administrator meeting with Gilroy Tennis Club back on April 10. The reasons for the closure, as again mentioned, repeated and frequent complaints from residents living around the neighborhood and park entrances, including public comments at council meetings, and multiple contacts by residents to various departments of city staff. City staff have also observed conditions of the park, including the Wayland and Hannah parking lots, including drug paraphernalia and indecent exposure. Overriding considerations that were made when making this operation decision is essentially competing values, right, and balancing and prioritizing amongst them. On one hand, park user convenience, which is a non-essential quality-of-life consideration, and then protecting life and safety, which is an essential mandated function of the city. And so whenever these two values are in conflict, staff will always prioritize the protection of life and safety above others. Additional consideration is who to assist in this case. So park users who visit on a temporary basis versus residents living around the park who live and sleep in the affected area. As far as the results of the closure, we do have comments from public safety that the closure diminishes the chances for criminals to use secluded areas. It's a proactive approach that uses a workload on law enforcement, and it helps to strike balance between convenience and deterring crime. Staff has received no complaints from the public, aside from a complaint from the Gilroy Tennis Club, which we'll talk about briefly here shortly. Staff has received feedback after the closure that the park is now more family-friendly and accessible during daytime hours. We are, it's worth pointing out that prevention reduces the need to react to the act itself as well as deterring other acts, as opposed to reacting to each single violation that occurs. As mentioned, we did receive a complaint from the Gilroy Tennis Club after the closure that there was an inconvenience as far as the distance that members and players would have to travel between Wayland parking lot and the Oaks parking lot, which is the next closest one. When looking at the path of travel, even though it looks closer in appearance for Wayland, it's actually only about 12 feet further. Staff has offered, despite that, to open the Wayland parking lot for tournaments and events at the request of the tennis club, but has not taken up the city on that offer yet. Available parking, there were 38 parking spaces taken out of service with those two-lot closures. We calculate the capacity, parking capacity of the area, including on the street parking, as 264. So it's about 14% of total parking capacity lost, leaving 86% available for use. Staff has checked the lots at Los Anamos Veterans Park at varied times, including around a Little League event, and plenty of parking has been observed at each visit. It does indeed create an inconvenience for those wishing to use the parking lots for Southern Park area access, but considered a minor inconvenience with the walking distance, especially when compared to the effects of the criminal activity there. We did receive a petition from the neighbors. Approximately 98 signatures were received requesting the closures to become permanent. So looking at the future of the lots, while it is a convenience to have those, the concern with crime and disturbances there is an overriding consideration. We did look at the potential of opening lots for part of the day each day, but generate its own issues. It does allow for a gathering spot for legal nuisance activity while it's open, and then also generates towing issues when closing the lot if, let's say, someone parked a vehicle there and didn't return in time for closure. So we're looking at some staff time and impound fees for those who leave their cars there a little too long. Currently, staff feels that the best measure is for the lots to remain closed and could be considered for other uses or return to parkland if that closure is deemed to be permanent. That completes the presentation. Happy to respond to any questions.
Thank you, Bryce. Okay, council members, first, we do have 12 speakers right now lined up to speak from the public. So I'm looking to, okay, I see Councilmember Armandaris is the only one that's up.
Oh, you don't see me?
I don't see you, okay, I'll go to you next, Councilmember Armandaris. Okay, you guys, thank you for telling me. I'll start with Councilmember Armandaris.
Thank you, I'll be quick. Is, were there ideas for what those other lots could be used for, like alternative?
I don't believe any specific alternatives have been identified at this point, so I'm, it is a potential.
Was your question answered?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, may I go to Councilmember Bracco next?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, Councilmember Bracco?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, Councilmember Marks.
When I read the report, Bryce, there are some inaccuracies. And it was mentioned three times in the report that there's only a 12-foot distance between the Wayland and Mantelli lots to the tennis courts, but the measurements that were given were not taken from the same entry point. However, that's not here nor there. The tennis players never worried about the walking distance. Why would we? We go out and play two hours of tennis, right? That really made no sense, but it bothered me that it was three times mentioned in the report. So the inconvenience part of this kept getting mentioned.
Councilmember, are you speaking as a tennis player or as a council member?
I'm speaking as a council member who talked with people that have these concerns. So I will try and keep it in. So I will try and keep it into the third person.
Thank you.
What, I have a question, I guess. Why was, was there only one email that had a complaint from a citizen about the unsafe conditions at the Wayland parking lot?
No, I believe there were more than that. I want to take my moments.
Do you have the exact number?
No, I do not.
Hmm, okay, because your report just talked about one, and then it talked about how on March fifteenth of this year, there, from the, okay, the date was, the email was sent on March fifteenth, and then thirteen days later, there was a community meeting held. Were any other agencies notified to go to that meeting to give input on mitigating this situation, like Little League or the Gilroy Tennis Club?
I don't know. I was not in the, I was not the one coordinating that meeting as far as the calling of that meeting.
Was there a reason why those other two organizations weren't asked?
I'm not aware if they were asked or not asked.
Okay, I think it's safe to say the tennis club was not asked. So, okay, that is a concern too, because we are all, or I should say, those agencies are just as much involved as the neighbors, because I can assure you, there's, there's no tennis player that'd want to see an unsafe neighborhood, and the safety for everyone is a concern for all, for all of us that play over there. Okay, and then, I'm not even going to talk about the sixteen parking spaces, you said thirteen, there's actually sixteen, that's not here nor there either. Has the resolution to solve overnight camping at Los Anamos Park been resolved in the parking lot?
We have received positive comments that the, as you mentioned, that the comments we're receiving is that the park has now been considered as family-friendly now, so we're seeing positive results.
But I mean, is there any camping still left in the park?
I don't have any statistics on that, no.
We have a habitual, there is a habitual camper in the handball courts that refuses to leave. The Wayland parking lot group that caused all the unsafe environments over there now live in the Mantelli parking lot. So what was trying to be mitigated just moved it closer to a playground area, and with our, with the council's five-hundred-foot ban of no camping, it's not being enforced. And I think as a council member, that's a real concern of mine, because we sit up here for hours, we read packets, we study these, you know, these ordinances that we're putting into effect, but without proper enforcement, what good does it do? Because the code enforcement by police and the code enforcement officers is the key to all of this. A park, okay, let me back up a little bit. I'm saying about how it's at Mantelli.
Wait, I'm sorry. Do you have a question for staff, or are you, this isn't a?
Well, I guess I'm going to ask the question of staff, and then I'm going to let the other people, you know, speak. Why weren't things mitigated? Why weren't there discussions? It just came, the report said there was no data based on closing this parking lot. So why, why weren't all the players involved in trying to solve it instead of just taking a public parking lot that has always been open and shutting it down for the neighborhood?
So I can trust the statistics. So one of the challenges we have whenever we have a changed circumstance, changed conditions like this.
I'm sorry, I did understand.
Yeah, so whenever you have changed, changed circumstances around something, it affects, affects a result. So by that meaning that, once the, the parking lot is closed, you have more observation, residents are calling in, so you can't really compare before and after data. So, and data, like I said, wasn't the consideration. What we had was a lot of complaints from residents, including public comments at the council about issues that are present there and through the site visits there, and observations from staff as well whenever going out to the site as well. As far as the membership, as I mentioned, I wasn't involved in the coordination, so I can't say why some, some were invited and some weren't invited at that point. And then as far as enforcement, I know, you know, the police department does do active patrol checks in the area, and I'd have to defer to them as far as any results of that. But again, we're getting positive comments from the neighbors that the conditions have improved because of the closure of those lots.
Okay. I'm going to have to. Okay, go ahead. Because other council members may want to speak, and you've gone on. Okay, Councilmember Arminderis, do you have another comment?
Yeah, if I could follow up to what Councilmember Marks mentioned, do you know what the tennis club, I mean, you could speak in third person again, what the tennis club's objection would be if it's not the thirteen or sixteen parking spaces, it's not the lack of equidistance, like?
Well, I was going to get to that, but I was cut off, kind of, to say what the real issue is.
I'm just wondering what the issue is.
I would like to, I'd like to answer that question.
Councilmember, I didn't cut you off. We all have to, we have equal to speak, and I don't know that other council members.
How about if I come to the FCM? Would that be okay?
And I do have a second question to that. Are there members of the tennis club that live in that vicinity?
Members of the tennis club, yes.
That live in that neighborhood?
A few blocks away. I don't know where every, every one of them live, yes.
But not somewhere where it would be impacted by the criminal activity happening in those parking lots?
Um, I don't know, I can't safely answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Bracco.
Bryce, Christmas Hill Park is locked up at night, isn't it?
I believe so.
So we don't have a problem with towing cars and stuff there, so why would there be any difference at the Southern Park?
It's just an observation as far as a partial opening. It's, I mean, it's, it's a, you know, obviously a concern for any, any closed parking, but that one has an established practice of that.
And do, do we know of any other problems at our other parks at night, same kind of problems?
Nothing that I'm aware of.
No? Thank you.
Okay, Jimmy, did you want to, no? Okay, I don't see any other council members on my screen, so I'm going to go back to Councilmember Marks, who says she wasn't finished, and then I'll go to public comment.
Okay, because that is a very good question that Councilmember Arminderis asked about why, why does it matter so much? I'm just going to read this.
Are you reading something from the tennis club?
Yes.
This is not, no, I'm sorry. You're here as a council member.
Okay.
The tennis club is part of the public, and he'll speak with public.
All right, then I'm done.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will open public comment. I show thirteen speakers, so I'm going to ask everyone to please limit your comments to two minutes. That's the timeframe, so please be conscientious. I don't want to cut anybody off, time yourself, okay? And the lineup, what I show is Terrence Fugazi, Dorina Creel, and Carla Rue. Okay, if you, if the three of you could please be close so that, you know, we can keep moving. All right, Terrence.
I'll try to Evelyn Wood this, so for those of you who know what that is. Anyway, I don't know that this problem is being framed the right way. I'm obviously anti-crime, and I don't know what some of these people are going through, but it's, it's not just a tennis court issue, and it's not just the people near the tennis court. There's other voices that probably haven't been asked, or they may not be so organized. These voices are not represented here always. There are citizens that use the park for baseball, T-ball, softball, soccer, et cetera, all of these things. And at the busiest times, the lots fill up fast, and now that other lots are closed, it's not just my observation, but city, city staff in the park who I asked this very morning. Citizens have not been given the opportunity to engage the Parks and Recreation Commission through an outreach program called Coffee in the Park. They've been trying to do this, the commission has for nearly a year. City staff has been postponing it for one reason or another, maybe they're, they're real reasons that matter, I get it, but meeting after meeting, citizens, citizens are unbelievably apathetic about this park, and resolving this needs a proper outreach to them. Thankfully, the crime situation for many reasons in this park is getting better, and as the park comes back to life, parking spaces are going to be needed more than ever, and in various places, there's picnic tables and everything else back there. We need this to be a thriving city park again. Driving's a key component of that. In the master plan for the parks, this is a community or destination park, so people will drive there. There are parks, they belong to all of us, we pay for them. This is an issue of law enforcement and security. If we don't have the resources to protect and serve the citizens of Gilroy so they might enjoy their parks, did we budget correctly? It may be an easy fix, but eliminating parking spaces because we cannot or do not want to adequately enforce the laws is, for me, the first white flag of surrender that we would have. So I suggest instead, we budget properly, open and close the gates for the, for the hours of the park, and provide law enforcement or other actions necessary to keep the park safe and crime-free. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dorina.
Sorry. Recently, the city closed the southwest parking lot at Los Anamos Park. For those of us who play tennis, this has created a hardship and a level of risk and safety. We have to park our cars on the streets, one, two, and three blocks away. When we are able to park in the parking lots, we are able to watch the ongoings and ensure the safety of our fellow tennis players and the safety of our cars. You know the saying, safety in numbers. When parking on the street, it feels unsettling and unsafe. Our safety is being taken away, and now you want to make it permanent. You are allowing bad actors to restrict the freedom of law-abiding productive citizens. Rather than enforce the law and deal with the bad actors, it's easier to restrict access for everyone and hope the problem goes away. It will not. We need to push back, take a stand on those breaking the law rather than punish those who are obeying the law. There are four spots, parking spots, on the street, one block away, and four to five more spots, two blocks away. With winter coming, there is no way to park that far away and still feel safe. It's not a matter of how far away we are, it's how disconnected we are from all the other people. And while playing tennis, if heaven forbid anyone would ever need emergency services, how would they get to us when precious moments count? Additionally, the parking lot closure is being perceived as the park being closed. Last week, when I was there, I was out on the street, and five people came in, turned around, and left, and they were all mothers with their strollers and people trying to walk their dogs. When we have league play, people from surrounding cities come to play. Seeing our parking lot closed looks bad for us, bad for our community, and it tarnishes our reputation. I urge you to put together a deal, a plan, I'm sorry, to deal with these lawbreakers and get the park under control as opposed to running away from the problems by restricting parking access. Gilroy deserves better. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Carla. And after that is Terry Lancaster, Skip Bloom, Charlie Morales. If you could all please come up.
Yes, I'm a tennis player, I'm a former operations manager here, and I had an over-twenty-five-year career in Parks and Recreation. While the staff may perceive that this has made things safer, we certainly do not feel safer out there. In fact, what you've done is you've made this area of the park more isolated, less visible, and less safe, and made it so it's more difficult for the good guys to access this area, and easier and more attractive for criminals. If a designer were to hand me a park design with this parking lot closed, I would have sent it back to them and sent them back to the drawing board and said, "Come back to me with something that's better than this." The closure of the parking lot is not a mere inconvenience of twelve feet, and as is pointed out, those, that data is inaccurate to begin with. The problem is that you haven't solved the problem, you've simply moved the problem somewhere else and created a new safety problem. Police, fire, and ambulance must now go around and come in the backside of, the Mantelli side of the park. If there's anything happening on that south side of the park, they have to drive across park, drive on the park pathways in order to get there, or they have to stop and unlock the gate, and this actually happened out there when we had somebody harassing us on the, on the courts. So taking this kind of action without it being substantiated by data-driven information that says that it is effective and the best course is really not wise public policy. One of the most troubling assertions in this report is that it's better to restrict this access and inconvenience legitimate park users and make it less safe for them than to take the targeted action against the criminal activity and address that activity directly. If we were to extend this logic, we would close the roads because of sideshows, we would, we would close transit centers because people do illegal things in transit centers, and we would, we would close the sidewalks because kids are riding their bikes on the sidewalks and making it difficult for people. You can't just close facilities because of legal activity, you have to tackle the illegal activity.
Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you for speaking.
Okay, one minute, I thought we had three minutes, and this is a real important issue to us.
Not when we have this many speakers.
Okay, I think that, that you need to set up some meetings with the, with the tennis players to talk about alternatives to this situation, and you need to engage us.
Okay. Terry Lancaster, you're next.
Hi, my name's Terry Lancaster. I'm a Gilroy resident. Thank you for allowing me two minutes to speak. I'm in a good position to talk about this issue since I live two blocks away from the park. I use the park almost every day. So to me, this whole issue is, it is a safety issue. That park has to be family-friendly, it has to be a community gathering place, and the activities that are going in that parking lot have significantly improved since that, since the parking lot was closed, and I'm all in favor of continuing to keep that, that area closed. We can't, I, I still see a number of people that are still living in the park on a daily basis, so there's still issues, and I have people in my own neighborhood that will not use that park, especially at night, because they don't feel safe going through that park. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Skip Bloom, and then Charlie Morales.
Yeah, I want to thank the city of Gilroy for locking the Wayland Lane parking lot approximately eight months ago. I live on Wayland Court at the end of Wayland Lane. We have a balcony that overlooks the park, and I spend a lot of time on our balcony. In the last sixteen years since we moved into our home, I have witnessed over ten fights, both male and females. Besides the fights, I've routinely witnessed numerous drug deals, and for some reason, people dump their trash, old, old tires, and car batteries in that parking lot. The last eight months since the city of Gilroy locked the gate, all these distractions have disappeared. Our quality of life has improved tremendously, and we are not kept awake with loud music, and we're not afraid to walk our animals and enjoy that area of the park anymore. I'm asking that you please keep the parking lot gates closed so that the value of our life and the value of our home stays at the level it is today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, former council member, Charlie Morales.
Yes, thank you very much for honoring us as far as, you know, at least considering the closure of the park, number one. I always thought that public safety is a priority, no matter in what neighborhood, no matter in what park, but public safety is number one. Now, for some of you, or some people that play tennis, they say, "Why do you want, I mean, what's going to happen to these people?" Like you said, they're going to climb through another park, but we're taking action. The, our, I have seen a lot of improvement, especially with the young people that are living now and moving in here in Gilroy, but they're moving in our area because they love Veterans Park. And let's talk about the veterans. They deserve the most respect, the almost totally respect to have a decent park with their name on it, as well as the safety of all this nonsense. And I call them malicious criminal behavior. There's no room for that park to have that, because it's very dangerous as well as very dishonorable. And to me, this is the most, you know, honorable park that we should, and I respect all the parks, and I don't think that, you know, exchanging weapons or having fights is the right thing to do. We should belong in the parks and recreation, and those activities are worthwhile. Walking, I see more senior citizens walking their children, and I thank the council as well as our police chief and city manager. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. So the next speakers are Rick Duyao, Mark Sacco, Ron Kirkish. I only see one coming up, so hopefully the other two are close by.
Hello, city council, thank you for having me today. My name's Rick Duyao. I've been a resident of eighty-four ninety-one Wayland Lane since nineteen sixty-two. I've seen everything that's gone on in the park and everything there. You know, I was approached by one of the council members about tennis there and parking, and I let her know my feelings, and, you know, I thought everything was fine, because I told her my personal feelings, that everything there, the park, is fine. I just took a picture this morning of four people playing tennis, and they were fine. Everything was good. This weekend, I do volunteer work for the city of Gilroy. I cook for the senior citizens, and we had our annual picnic there. There was a big tennis tournament going on at the same time, and everybody seemed to have enough parking for everybody, and everybody for everybody, and everybody went on the merry way. There was no complaints. We drove in and out of the facilities with our trucks, delivering food with no access and no problems that I don't see, medical emergencies, fire departments, that have been getting in there all year since I've lived there all my life. The only other problems that I've seen, just all the riffraff and problems that I've seen the last few years. I lost my son seven years ago to a drunk driver. I have a grandson that plays every day on the streets. What I go through, I don't want to wish upon anybody here. I've had people spin donuts in front of my house, and I live 15 feet from the entrance to the park. I've seen them running into the park and drive out at exceedingly amounts of speed, hit my neighbor's car, and threaten everybody's life that tries to walk a dog, or as a senior trying to cross the street with kids, or, or anybody walking their dogs through the park. I mean, I don't think I have to say anymore. It's just right there, writing on the wall. Let's, let's open our eyes a little bit more and direct all our grievances and, and, you know, I guess, our gripes to making this thing work. I mean, maybe we all volunteered in this stuff for the seniors who are completely impacted in this, you know, since they're shutting down the facilities, and this is a once-in-a-lifetime thing we do for them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, Mark Sacco, followed by Ron Kirkish, and then Michael Vagiera.
And the name is Mac Sacco.
Oh, sorry. I don't have my glasses on. You're right. Mac.
Yeah, I would just like to, to, to make the following suggestions. I mean, I've lived here since 1945. I'm probably one of the oldest people in this room that, that has, has lived in this city. I've seen it change from a city of 5,000 to, to what it is today. And I live about, about three minutes from the park, you know, if I walk from my home on Lawrence Drive to here. So I've used this park for over, for maybe 55 years. And so I know the issues. I've seen things that have they... Anyway, I'd like to suggest that the staff of parks and police and other relevant departments in the city meet with representatives of the tennis club and other, other groups to review and discuss the parking lot closure and, and consider other options to effectively address the problems. And I think an action plan should be developed to address the issues while, while preserving the public access and not creating a safety hazard for the tennis players and others who, who parked around on a regular basis. And the action plan should include a monitoring and a follow-up plan to assess the effectiveness of the action plan, and, which is supported by objective information or, or data, and to implement other strategies if needed.
You've got 10 seconds if you need it, because it started, okay. Thank, thank you. Okay, Ron Kirkish, Michael Vagiera.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and community. Originally, my thought was, I, I used to play tennis at that, at that court, and I liked the fact that I could park my car, and I could see, while I was playing tennis, I could see if anybody was messing around, who was, what was going on. And I, I feel that this is probably something that tennis players would like too. However, I've been listening to some of the other people that live in the area. So there is an issue, I think, that we need to consider too, of safety. I think that's a serious condition. Do we want to turn, however, one, the original lady that spoke, said, "Are we going to close everything and let them win," so to speak? I, I don't think that's the way to do it. I think that we have to have more enforcement. Let's get out there. Let's get code enforcement out there. Let's get police out there. Let's monitor this. And if that, if that stuff's going on, don't, don't punish the tennis players. Let's go after the bad people. Let's fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Michael, followed by Jeff, followed by Araceli.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Michael Vagiera. I'm a father and husband, and also a Gilroy Little League baseball coach. I share my own perspective before I go into a neighbor's statement I'm here to read for him tonight. There's been no issues with the Little League Association in Gilroy with those parking lots. I'll just add that. But again, I'm here for a right to read a letter from my neighbor and good friend Art and Francis Gomez. Dear City Council, we have lived here in Gilroy for 46 years, next to Los Anmas Park. Since then, we have had car break-ins. Our house was burglarized one week before Christmas, where most of our gifts were open. The Fourth of July holiday is horrible with all the trash people leave, plus the fires we have to put out. Our travel trailer has been vandalized, batteries, propane takes have been stolen, people parking the RVs next to our house, homeless people leaving in their car, we'd set a time in the parking lot, cars speeding in and out of the parking lot, people doing donuts in their cars, loud music throughout the days, also loud music in the middle of the night. I have memorized the non-emergency numbers of the police department. Every afternoon, workers will gather to drink beer and listen to loud music, and then speed out of the parking lot very fast. We know there are not enough police officers to patrol the parking lot, but ever since the gates went up, it's been so nice and quiet in our neighborhood, and now a lot more families use a kid's playground. So please keep the gates up so we can get some well-deserved sleep. Thank you, Art and Francis Gomez. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jeff Anderson, followed by Araceli, followed by Brian, and then Richard.
Hello, I'm Jeff Anderson. I own a home right on Los Anmas Park. My fence backs up to the park. When I first bought my house, I was so happy and excited, right on the park. This is great. Got a dog, walk the dog. Since then, I noticed this parking lot on, right on Hannah. It's dark. It's not well-lit. Numerous cars hanging out in the parking lot late at night, making noise, doing all sorts of unlawful things. There's many motorhomes that actually park and live there. There's trash everywhere. They never clean up. They're loud and noisy. Living next to this park, there's been shootings, there's been stabbings, you know, and it's due to this type of people that reside in these parking lots. Shortly after I moved in, my house was burglarized and vandalized. So I feel for my safety. I feel, you know, worried about going into the park. So basically, you know, I'm sorry that these tennis players might have to walk a block or two, but I think if they had their houses vandalized, or they feel for their safety, they would also agree to close the parking lots. Now that they're closed, we do notice it's much better. It's a nicer place. We don't have as many problems. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chris.
Good evening, everyone. I hate being up here, not because I dislike seeing all of you, I like seeing all of you, but because every time I've been up here, not because of I want to, but it's a need. And so today, when I speak, I'm speaking on behalf of my nine-year-old and my seven-year-old. I came to you over a year ago, asking that a solution be found for the issues that were surrounding Los Anmas Park, and yes, Hannah and Arnold primarily. But I spoke, as I spoke to neighbors, since I will talk to whomever wants to talk to me, I found that the issues that we were having on our side were the same that they were having on the other side. Now, I'm here because it would be very selfish of me just to consider the parking lot on my side, no, when it's affecting everybody else. Parking is not an issue. I myself went out there one day when Little League was occurring, just to take account, because my husband's a Little League coach, and I was out there, so I took inventory of the parking spots, and not, not at 9:30, not at 10:30, not at noon, not at 1:30, where there was there not a parking spot available. So, when somebody uses the word "winning," I'm not trying to win anything. All I want is the safety of my kids. All I want is our quality of life, our mental health. That's what I'm here asking. That's what most of my neighbors are here asking. Some of them who are not going to come here before you, because it's very nerve-wracking, but they're here. They're asking for the same thing. So again, do it for the children, do it for the community as a whole. I am their front and center. I see the families walking through. I've had conversations with older women who say, "You know what? Three years ago, I wouldn't come because I would get intimidated by whomever was in the parking lots and was consuming drugs and drinking and doing all kinds of illegal activity and crimes, and, and that no longer exists, and because of that, more people are utilizing the park." Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, followed by Richard, followed by Bruce.
Little City of Gilroy, I just want to point this out. I love the City of Gilroy. I love tennis every day. I just work out every morning, using those courts. The thing is, I just wish, you know, the thing is, I like you guys closing it still. You know, you open the courts at 7:30 in the morning, and you close them, I don't know what time. But I just think that should be the same thing with the gates there too. And also, I want to make a note, I have a friend that was disabled. I just think those handicapped parking lots should be there and just make it much easier for my friend to just to walk close to the parking lot, to the courts. And, you know, for me, like, every morning, I always work out every morning, playing tennis, either in playing matches on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, Saturdays. I just like to bring my gear, you know, like my, my ball machine. Just like, park there, bring my gear in, so I don't have to walk that far. And I agree with the, you know, with those homeless people in the handball courts. All I'm saying is, I just think this will just help us get the parking lot open again, and just any, like, offense, like tennis offense, or like, any, like, offense, like Little League baseball, you guys said, any, like, picnic offense, like the Money Girl, or anything. I just think that those parking lots should be open just from 7:30 on till, till it closes, and just, and if they, if some people do come in, and if we close them, just tell them, "Get out," and just, you know. And all I can say is, tennis strong, tennis forever. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Richard Anderson, followed by Bruce Zerpa.
Hi, I live near the parking lot with Hannah. My house is right against the, the park. We do have a child's playground right behind the house. That's right next to the parking lot. Kids that are there get harassed by the people in the parking lot doing drugs. They yell at me when I walk through. They harass you, and they'll make you feel comfortable. That access right there is also access for cars to come in there at night. They drive into the park to the jungle gym and create a big castle. If you ask them to be quiet, then you're a target. Walking around the park, those are dark areas, those two parking lots. It's much easier to patrol Mantilli. Everything can be seen by police officers from the road, much easier to see. Those two dark corners are harder to figure out what's going on in there. I've seen fireworks. We have to worry about fireworks because we have some big pine trees. Every single year, we got to get up on the roof and clean every single one off, because we worried about our house burning down. It's, it's a bad situation. And during the day, during the workday, the people that go there, they're, they're doing drug deals. And some of them get violent, some of them get in fights. They throw beer bottles. There's beer bottles in the, where the jungle gyms are and stuff. I know you guys like to play games called tennis, but you guys, when you're done with your game, you go home. We have to live there. Thank you.
All right, Bruce Zerpa.
Hi, City Council members, Mayor, Jimmy. Hi, everybody. Great to see all of you. I'm here on behalf of, I'm a Gilroy citizen. I'm head of the pickleball club that we have here at Gilroy, and I'm here on behalf of my friends that live in the area. Terry is one of them. There's a few other friends that I have there. I used to use that back parking lot when pickleball was loud at that park. And using that parking lot, I personally witnessed fights, drug deals, people sleeping in their cars, guys vomiting in the parking lot, glass everywhere. It was an absolute mess. And I am in complete support of having this completely closed and totally blocked permanently, because when we played pickleball, and we had women that played pickleball with us, they weren't, they didn't feel safe going out to their car at night. So one of the guys that played pickleball would have to escort them to their car just to make sure they got in their car safely. And that's not, that's not a good thing for anybody in that regard. So, as I said, I'm here to support my, my friends that live over there, and, you know, pickleball community, we get along with everybody. We want everybody to be inclusive, but this is one area that we need to put our foot down and support, that this should be closed up permanently. So that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comments, I'm going to close public comment and come back to council, bearing in mind that this is just receiving this report. There's no action here, but certainly it would be appropriate, right, for council members to give any kind of, do you want any kind of direction, Jimmy, or just receive report and end it?
Well, the, the city staff's intention is to leave these lots closed, so if that is a policy decision that council would like to discuss at a future meeting, I would take that direction in return.
Got it.
There was a, a few people in the public who asked about community meetings. Like, were there, I read in the report something, but how were they announced if there was community meetings? And can discussions be had regarding, like, tournaments or special events?
Yes, we did include in the staff report that we made available to the tennis club that the lots were available for their use. We would give them keys for big events, tournaments, activities on the weekend, but to date, we haven't been asked for that request. And concerning the community meetings, I, it has been a while. It's been over a year, so I really couldn't tell you factually how we advertised for that, but we did have good attendance. We met, and then we individually reached out to both clubs to meet, and we did that as well. So we felt like we were able to get that input.
Councilmember Bracco? Oh, you're on, you're on there. Oh, okay, sorry. Okay, so staff's position is to, is to keep this closed. He, there would need to be a council majority asking for something different. Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Oh, no, no, I was just going to say that, I mean, I thank everyone that came here tonight to speak. And for me, obviously, and I've had a chance to talk with a lot of the residents in the area, and that, you know, what I heard, and I think it's the most important thing, is, is public safety, especially for our children that live in that area. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna move to accept the report. I know it's not, it's not a motion.
It's not a motion, yeah. There's no motion necessary. It's a matter of, does somebody want something different to come out of this, or keep the status quo? Councilmember Marks?
Oh, I thought, did you want to talk, Councilmember Klein? I mean, I do appreciate everyone's comments tonight, and I, and I know exactly what all of you are talking about. We have lived it. Believe me, we've played there since the 90s. We have seen everything. I think where I'm coming from is that I, I don't want to see facilities closed down because of bad behavior. I want to see the bad behavior mitigated, and you get rid of it. Because when you start allowing it, you're having a certain element that just thinks they can do whatever they want. You know, when all of you were up here describing what your families went through, I was seeing there think of every single incident that we have lived through similarly to you. But if it's going to happen there, it's going to happen elsewhere in the city. And my bottom line is, I don't want to see it happening anywhere. We have to put a stop to it. And so I, I would like to have council discussion. I would like to see, you know, that was my intention when I put it on the agenda, was to get a council vote and discussion, because it goes much deeper than closing two parking lots. It's called law enforcement, and it's called code enforcement. And I think maybe if we all hang tight together, that is ultimately what we want to do. And I have no problem whatsoever with the Hannah Street parking lot staying closed, and I hope council realizes that when that man got up here to talk, he was not talking about Wayland. It was Hannah Street. So, council members, what do you think?
I, I'm good with it coming back as far as having the discussion and making the decision from council on, on handling that vote interest.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay, sorry. I can barely hear you, so I guess others could either.
I agree with you, Congress.
Jimmy, could this come back in, like, six months with a status report, or is that what you mean? Or what, what are you referring to?
What would staff want from us? Direction, and just bringing it back at a certain time, or what?
Staff isn't looking for anything.
Just reporting back.
Yeah, this is just a report. Councilmember Marks is asking.
Is to say, would we ever be able to have the Wayland parking lot open, but not at the expense of the safety of the neighbors who live there? That's the whole thing. You know, I, it has to, you know, the bad behavior has to be eradicated, and I'd like to see this council take a stand on... to see this council take a stand on how to do that so these neighbors can live peacefully. If that doesn't happen.
We passed our ordinance, we passed the ordinance about people being in the park.
Exactly, and it's not being enforced.
And we funded our police department.
Yes.
At the request of the police department.
You're right.
So, I'm, so where's your solution?
My solution is, we have to have a really tough conversation about why code enforcement and law enforcement's not going in. We have a no camping zone in all of our parks. Why is that being allowed?
But half of these residents who spoke talked about how much better it is now. All of the improvements as a result of this.
Because it's moved away from their houses. It's moved to the other side.
And so the point was.
And no houses are around there.
In terms of safety, right?
Right.
So their safety is priority because that's where they live.
Right, but we never eradicated it.
And that was where the worst nuisance was.
Yes.
And the ordinance is brand new, right? The ordinance is, it's fairly new.
Okay, rather than, okay, rather than having the two of you just going at it, I've heard, possibly two councilmembers who want to entertain doing something different. Two is not a majority. So we're not, we're not, we don't speak from, I'm sorry, okay? We had public comment. Two is not a majority. So unless there are other councilmembers.
Well, how many did you count?
I counted Councilmember Marks and Councilmember Klein.
Oh.
Okay? Is that it?
Yes.
So staff's position is going to stay.
Fred, are you supporting or?
This is for, this is for staff's position to stay. And that doesn't mean, I'm sure we will get a report, right? This doesn't mean it's closed forever, but for now, this is working for that problem. And so that is what we are saying. Okay? Jimmy, is that clear? Yeah. Okay. It's eight, almost 8:12. I'd like to take a five-minute recess before we get on to 13.2. All right? Thank you, everybody. All right. I'm going to reconvene the council meeting, everyone, and we're on item 13.2. It's 8:19 PM. Sidewalk vending permit fee and supervising code enforcement officer. All right, the staff report is coming from John. Go ahead and take it away.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of City Council. John Biggs with your Community Development Department. We have a presentation, sort of a two-part presentation for you this evening on the proposed fee for the sidewalk vending permit application and then a request for supervising code enforcement officer that will be given by our Community Development Director, Ms. Goy. So just a little bit of background from the council. You worked very hard to get us to the point we're at today. Back in the 7th of August, you, that was a point at which you introduced the ordinance for sidewalk vending. That was after a lot of work and effort on the part of the City Council. You had workshops and study sessions in addition to a couple of meetings to discuss that ordinance. And then at your meeting on the 21st of August, you actually adopted the ordinance and it became law, or it does become law on the 20th of September, this Wednesday. As you've noted in your packet, we are proposing two fees for a sidewalk development permit application. The initial application fee is being proposed at $865. And this supports the council's goal of having a fiscally resilient and responsible fee that is supporting the efforts that staff's put into reviewing the application and processing the application. It's 100% cost recovery, and staff did go through and take a look at all the various steps. We anticipate that we part of processing a sidewalk vending permit application, and $865 is the fee that we developed. We're proposing an annual renewal fee of $204. That's going to be quite a bit less work than the processing of the $865 permit application at initial application. You'll note that in the agenda report, we gave you some comparisons between this fee and other agencies. I would just, you know, this, this fee is higher than the other agencies charged. I would just remind the council that the ordinance that we adopted is a very comprehensive ordinance, and we are expecting that we will present or do quite a bit more staff work in the review of these applications than other agencies are doing. It's not simply looking at an application and checking a box, making sure that someone has provided the information. We need to make sure that they provide and show us distances to certain physical features out in the area where they're going to be setting up their vending device, the depth of the sidewalk and so forth. And we also anticipate that there might be some instances where staff will need to go out in the field and confirm what a applicant is proposing. So that covers the fee. And then that takes us on to our, ongoing or starting our outreach and education effort. We are not going to begin taking immediate enforcement efforts to make sure that people have their permit in hand. It's going to be an effort to get out there in the public and really educate and train them about the types of permits that are necessary and make sure that they're in a good position to come to the city, apply for their permit, and be successful in getting that permit. In that, furtherance of that effort, we have created a website that I believe will be going live today or tomorrow or the day after. We're also going to be posting notices in some of the areas in town where we've seen a higher-than-normal level of sidewalk vending activity, Monterey Street in the downtown, for example, letting people know, and we'll be taking down these notices daily. The notices will be letting them know or sort of putting them, quote, "on notice" that a permit is necessary. Not only a permit from the City of Gilroy, but also a permit from the County Health Department and a seller's permit. We'll also be doing some in-person outreach. Our code enforcement staff will be going out on Friday and Saturday evenings and hoping to make face-to-face contact with vendors that happen to be set up on the street so that they can explain the permit processing and the steps that are needed to get the permit coming up in the near future. We'll also be holding a number of workshops, and these workshops are really geared to help train and educate people that want to get a sidewalk vending permit on the steps they need to take in order to get that vending permit. And the permits, like I mentioned earlier, outside of the City of Gilroy permit, that they'll need to get and have before they actually submit an application to the city. That, at some point, could lead to enforcement if we don't find that people are getting their permits or they're not complying with the standards that we have in the place or the standards on which the permit is issued. We do have a number of, I guess, legs to the stool to our enforcement opportunities to compel people to, you know, get the permit or comply. We have the ability to issue citations. We have the ability to confiscate the supplies that they have. We also have the ability to revoke their permit if they're not compliant with the rules or their permit requirements. And we can also call in the County Health Department to see if they can assist us in some, some form, some manner in enforcing those rules and enforcing the permit that they issued to the vendors. So again, that's going to be a down-the-road step in the process. We're going to get out there first to educate the community and let them know that the, about the permit requirements, and hopefully, we will get very good and successful compliance with all of that. And with that, I think we're ready for the next stage of this.
John, could I ask you one question just before you move on to Sharon? It just has to do with the fees, because you showed us in our packet, you know, a list of fees, and with the exception of Salinas, we're quite a bit higher than the others. Do you know if the others are 100% cost recovery or are they in fact subsidized?
I would suspect every, every fee that you shared, that we shared with you in the packet is subsidized to a degree. I think Salinas is the only one that I would say really approaches what I would calculate as cost recovery. And that, and that's just me taking a look at what their fee is and knowing that the steps that I went through to develop the fee that we're recommending to you.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, because we asked for 100% cost recovery. It's just in the comparison, we're not comparing to 100% cost recovery in other cities.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay.
That was my question. Do you want to ask, yeah, sure. Councilmember Tovar?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, John. So, thank you for this. So, yeah, I mean, looking at the other cities, obviously, and I understand, you know, your explanation why our cost is so high, you know, but then you look at a city of San Jose that's, you know, 10 times better than us, where their program is for two years at $500, right?
Right.
And in reading the report, it states in there, obviously, that this is a learning curve, not only for the vendors but for the city, because we've never had anything in place. And again, my hope is that wherever we go with this, that we're going to give vendors the access to do everything the right legal way, right? Where if we have a cost of over $1,000 for two years, in reality, who, you know, who's going to go and apply for permits and not sort of do it the illegal way? I'm just throwing that out. So my question for, for you in thinking about the cost, and because I know other cities do this, did we, have we looked into some sort of incentives to help support this program? Where other cities are doing some sort of incentive from the general fund to say, you know what, pilot year, first year, this is what we're going to charge you. Come second year, if we realize that it's more man-hours or female hour, or whatever it is, then we can sort of, you know, change our rates. I just want to see, because again, I want to make sure that these vendors are doing what they're supposed to do. But again, if it's a pilot program and the city's trying to learn how to go about this, I don't see how that's a win-win, you know?
Yeah, well, the, the reason I put that in the agenda report, I expect that the first applications that we process is going to be the learning curve for the city. When we developed the fee, I was trying to look at it as if we were processing an application with all of that background and all of that knowledge. You know, we've been processing the permits for, for a year. So I, I just wanted to make the council aware that there's a little bit of a learning curve that's going to take place here. But the fee reflects the actual time that an experienced staff member processing an application will take. And, and we didn't, we don't, we don't have any incentives. We haven't wrapped that into the fee that we're recommending. We wanted to bring first the, the fee that's 100% cost recovery, and if the council gives us.
No, the council didn't, yeah.
No.
The council didn't ask for incentives for this, so that's, that shouldn't be something we're talking about unless there's a council majority that asks for that.
Don't, don't close it down right off the bat.
No, no, I'm not closing it down. I'm just saying that we didn't ask for.
I'm just bringing something up.
Yes.
Again, I want to make sure that we're doing everything to help them, but making sure that they do everything legally, do it the right way.
Of course.
And if, I understand, we didn't, we didn't ask for incentives, but I'm saying that maybe that's the way, we're saying, you know, what, this is what we're going to do. Make sure you guys do everything the right way. And if you don't, then we enforce it.
Yeah.
So again, I'm just looking.
I think that goes without saying.
Yeah.
But yes, okay. Councilmember Armandares, is this on the fees?
Yes.
Okay.
So, the cost recovery model, is that, is that applied to all of, all of the various departments or, or programs within code enforcement?
I don't know about code enforcement specifically, but other permit application fees that we have, that's all based on a cost evaluation or analysis study that supports the fees that we do have in place, things for like design review or use permit application approval or architectural approval. So we, we kind of looked at a similar way of evaluating the fee as those other studies had.
It's similar, but is it also 100% cost recovery?
This fee that we're recommending, yes.
No, I mean the ones that I'm referring to.
I, you know, I wasn't part of the discussions for the adoption of those fees, so I don't know if there were specific ones where the City Council said we're going to subsidize those in some way.
Jimmy can answer that, he says.
Thank you.
Councilmember Armandares, years ago, the council adopted a policy about what level of cost recovery goes for certain types of permits. So for things like recreation or, you know, activities, it's a lower threshold. I can't tell you exactly, but a lot, the majority of the permits from planning and building are based on 100% cost recovery. So that, that's been the.
Planning and building?
Yes.
Okay, but weed, a bait.
It's actually contained in the municipal code. I'm sorry to interrupt, but there, there's a whole list, as Jimmy says, of different fees and different levels of cost recovery.
Okay. Because I see the ones that are quoted in the staff report about blight, weeds, garbage, you know, this new smoking ordinance. And I'm wondering, is it fair? Are we being disparate in how we're treating the vendors? Or are we asking them to shoulder the fees or the cost incurred by any of these other code enforcement issues? Because the fee looks excessive. I mean, it looks incredibly excessive compared to what other cities are charging, and my concern is that it be prohibitive, right? And I don't think that should be by design, because that's not, it's not fair treatment, right?
Yeah, I, I mean, Jimmy wants to answer this. I just know that from a council standpoint, we directed staff to come back with cost recovery. We said we, we were not subsidizing. What I see in this report is a one-time fee that looks high. The rest of the time, it's $204 a year. And this is for people to, to set up shop without any rent, without any, I mean, this is, they're, they're using public space to begin with. So I don't see it as something that should be subsidized. It's not something that the council directed should be subsidized. So I appreciate staff coming back with the full cost recovery and it, yeah.
Yeah, that wasn't the point of my question. It's whether or not the, the cost for other type of enforcement is being folded in, in terms of the cost recovery.
It is not.
Okay, that's a, thank you. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you.
John, before you go any further, I'm just wondering, how many Friday and Saturday evening hour, hours outreach, outreaches will you do?
We're looking at probably two or three opportunities to get.
So they say two or three weekends?
Yeah, two or three weekends where our code enforcement.
And then after that, they'll have workshops set up for them?
Then we're going to have workshops, and we're also, we've, we've been reaching out to our County Health Department so that they can be part of these workshops and people can learn firsthand from.
And then how many workshops do you see us have?
I would say two to three, but we would be available, you know, to attend at the invitation, you know, other locations where people might feel it's beneficial for us to be available and answer questions and give them information.
And then the vendors will be able to still keep doing what they've been doing while all of these workshops are going on, correct? Or how does, how's that going to work?
We, we expect that once vendors learn that they need a permit and the steps they'll need to get through the permit, that they will stop vending, and they will go through us, be, be reaching out to us at the staff level, trying to get those permits in hand so that they can operate legitimately with approvals.
So realistically speaking, when would a vendor have to have all the permits? Realistically?
I would say by, towards the end of October, we would expect someone to be operating with their permits in hand.
Okay.
And, and we, we could get feedback from some vendors that say it's going to take a little bit longer than we had anticipated to get our permit from the County Health Department. I also believe that's going to be our, or a vendor's highest hurdle to jump. And we can, we can adjust if need be. But, you know, we are going to be expecting people to at least be applying and going through the process.
So the health department permit is on top of the $800 and some dollars?
Yes, there is a health department permit that's required.
Because that's not the city. No, I know, yeah.
Yeah, health department permit that's required.
I'm just trying to get a handle on how much the vendors really have to pay.
There is a business license that's required and then the state seller's permit that's required, but there's no fee for the state seller's permit. And for the county health permit and the business license, those are on sliding scales. Health departments, depending on the type of activity you're conducting, for the business license, it's based on gross receipts. So.
Okay. Councilmember Klein, okay, Councilmember Tovar, and then we, the staff has not finished with their report. I started this because I just wanted a question on the fee, but, but, okay.
Just real quick on what will drive those workshops? Interest or are you just going to put them out there?
We're going to, the first two or three, we're just going to put them out there and try and get the word out as broadly as possible that these are opportunities to learn about the permits necessary for getting a sidewalk vending permit.
And the question I have, because again, a restaurant, whatever it is, I'm just, you can't open something without health permit, any of those types of things. So my concern is, if they're still vending, yet they don't have a health certificate, what's going to, what's the trigger in the sense of that you're allowed to finally get that permit? Should those, all these five or six items be in hand so that, here's an $865 check and here's all these items, my permit? Is that how it's supposed to work? And then I can vend?
We are going to not accept a city application until they have the health permit, their seller's permit, and their business license in hand. Those are going to be the, you know, three punches on your ticket in order to get through the front door for-
Because that's our expectation of regular businesses. It's the same expectation.
We don't want to give anyone the, you know, the false hope that with, once they've given us their application for our sidewalk vending permit, then it's going to be a two or three week process if they're having difficulty getting, you know, that seller's permit, for example.
Okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Mayor. John, and my colleague next to me, just trying to answer the question, or ask the question I was going to ask, but in regards to the outreach efforts, who's going to be leading that?
That will be, there's some ongoing discussions in the department, but it'll be between our building official and our code enforcement staff. And I'm sure our director would probably be involved in that as well.
So I guess you'd know what I'm going to ask next. Do they speak Spanish?
Yes, we will have, if they don't speak Spanish, we will definitely have translators there like we did for the workshop we held back in-
Okay, and I ask that, and again, looking at sort of the efforts here, when you say in-person outreach, evening hours on Friday and Saturday, walk me through that because that's when they're working. Are we going to go and interrupt them and ask them, how's that going to work?
It's going to be a friendly visit with the vendors, letting them know, hey, in case you didn't hear, you are required to get a permit from the City of Gilroy, and by the way, you need some other permits with that. Here's a flyer that kind of explains the process and the steps and the permits that are needed and some, gives some information about the rules that we have in place.
Okay, and then finally, in regards to the website, that'll be also in-
Yes, that's-
And I just ask that whichever direction we go, when it comes to, you know, instructions of how to go about applying for a permit, that it's made, you know, easy to read, easy steps are easy to, you know, to follow, because sometimes, you know, there may be language that I don't even understand, right? And obviously, I don't want that to be a deterrent for individuals, so.
And just if I can help, you know, give you a picture about what we're, what the efforts are, we, we do, we're providing a, you know, real simple site plan so that they can show us where their vending locations could be, distance, you know, how deep the sidewalk is, how far it is away from different things, so to make it easy on them.
No, and I say all this because again, if we're doing everything that we need to do and they decide not to apply, then, you know, they'll, they'll need to move on, right? But, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Sharon, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and members of the community. If I can just kind of follow up on what John was sharing about the outreach efforts. Today, our website went live and we have all the forms in English posted. That's because we're waiting for the translated documents and those we should receive tomorrow and we'll be posting those. And last week, when I gave council an update last Monday, we talked about doing the in-person outreach, we actually started some of that today already. And we talked about putting the A-frames out there with the signage. So today, we're just waiting for the flyer to be laminated, so then the A-frames will be out there tomorrow. And then this coming Friday and Saturday evenings is when we're going to do much more active educational outreach with the businesses. All right.
Good, I'll see you out there.
All right. So here, I'm going to talk about the code enforcement activity and capacity. So prior to the pandemic, the city had 3.25 full-time equivalent in the code enforcement function. There were two full-time code enforcement officers plus two part-time code enforcement officers, each working about 25 hours a week, mostly on weekends and evening enforcement. And during the pandemic, the two code enforcement positions, part-time positions were defunded among the other 40, 40 positions also because of the economic downturn as a result of the pandemic. So since then, we've had just two full-time code enforcement officers. And code enforcement receives a really wide range of concerns, you know, from the community. You saw some of that in our staff report. When we measure customer interaction as activities, which will include all the contact, you know, phone log, entries, meetings and inspections, this chart you see on this slide kind of demonstrates the trend over the past seven years. So you can see that the code enforcement activities have been returning to pre-pandemic levels, basically, because people have resumed their normal activities. And one thing we have also observed this past year is that the complexity of the code enforcement cases has really increased. And we've also had to work a lot with other departments, so this, you know, cross-departmental collaboration on cases has also increased because of the complexity of the cases. For example, when we conducted inspections in the Travel Park Circle area earlier this year, we looked into all of the, we had researched a lot of the records and we ended up opening six cases because there are different parcels and different property owners involved. And for each case, there's different violations and different type of correction items and different timeline for all of those. And we collaborated with the police department on those too. And for every one of those cases, the case history is very extensive, involving a lot of contact entries, research, site visits, follow-ups and letters and notices and all of those things. Another example of the increasing complexity is new ordinances. So an example is the-
The sites are open?
Yeah, no, actually, I'm still staying on this slide, just kind of giving examples about the complexity and cross-departmental cases. Yeah. So another example is the ordinance that council adopted this spring about prohibiting smoking at multifamily housing and public events. Our code enforcement team has addressed numerous complaints from one source. This includes responding to about 50 phone calls and emails and also conducting multiple site visits and in-person meetings. And staff also had lots of discussions with management, so we can really analyze the ordinance and the situation, explore the possible ways to resolution. And most recently, the sidewalk vending ordinance council adopted, you know, has pretty involved in detailed requirements and standards. So to fully implement and facilitate all of these complex programs and to address, you know, the workload returning to pre-pandemic levels, staff recommends adding an advanced level code enforcement position to really expand our expertise and our capacity for the whole code enforcement function. And one aspect I want to highlight is that code enforcement activities involve many procedural requirements. And there's timelines and, you know, and documentation involved, so it's pretty time-consuming. And for a typical code enforcement function in the city, there's generally a supervisor position that helps to prioritize those activities and also ensure the procedures are being followed all consistently, you know, among the different cases. So a senior staff member can really help with that. And that's going to take me to my next slide. So during the council meetings where we were developing the sidewalk vending ordinance, and we heard council's direction and the priority on enhanced enforcement efforts. To achieve this council priority, after we analyzed the activities I just talked about and the increasing complexity, staff recommends adding a supervising code enforcement officer position. Staff believes that this resource level now with one supervising code enforcement officer and two code enforcement officers, and staff believes this provides a basic level for reactive, complaint-driven enforcement efforts. And most jurisdictions operate on a reactive model of code enforcement. And this function is typically funded by a general fund because it serves the entire community. And going back to council member Armandera's question a little bit earlier, the reason we have a fee for the sidewalk vending, because it's a permitting element, you know, of this function. But overall, the function really overall, you know, is responding to complaints from the community. And those are generally just funded by general fund. And the proposed resource level with one supervising code enforcement officer and two code enforcement officers, we believe that will expand the expertise, proficiency and capability of the whole function. And in particular, we envision the supervising code enforcement officer to handle the most complex and sensitive investigations and cases, organize supervised prioritized code enforcement activities, implement new policies, new ordinances, new procedures, and also focus on the more complicated cross-departmental type of cases with police, fire and/or public works departments. And after joining the team, we see the supervising code enforcement officer to be able to address and assist with the accumulation and backlog of cases and also elevate some of the activities that currently have been necessitated to be lower activity, such as signages, off-site advertisement, abandoned newspaper racks, shopping carts. So for fiscal impact, revenues from the sidewalk vending program, you know, as John mentioned earlier, the first year, we envisioned some new applications coming in. And we estimated total, you know, if everybody we have observed comes in to apply for the permit, that will total probably about 55 applications. And at the full cost recovery of $865 per application, that'll come out to about $47,500. And this is everybody, you know, if everybody comes in. And the revenue will also include anticipated annual renewals from those permits. So at $204 per year, you know, assuming the 55 applications, annual renewal will come out to lower over $11,000. And there may be new applications each year as well. Now, on the expenditure side, to add a supervising code enforcement officer position, we estimate about $150,000 per year from the general fund. And once approved, staff will work on establishing a new job description and salary range and then submit that to the personnel commission for review and approval. And the cost will be absorbed within the current budget cycle because of salary savings. And this will be budgeted in the next two-year budget cycle in, you know, future years as well. So here's staff's recommendation, adopt a resolution establishing a permit application fee and annual refu, renewal fee for sidewalk vending, approve the addition of a supervising code enforcement officer position in the community development department, and adopt a resolution approving the updated position control list for fiscal year '24 and '25. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Okay, we have one member of the public wanting to speak. Is it okay to go to that before council continues discussion? Okay, thank, thank you, Sharon. So I show Terrence Fugazi as the one person wanting to speak. You've got, you've got three minutes.
Should have more, because this is really like two agenda items wrapped into one, isn't it?
Three minutes.
Anyway, I read the packet and, you know, based on information, recent public statements, even from the mayor and from the city administrator, we definitely need more code enforcement. We're in dire need. We're not able to do the things we need to do right now, so this is great. But is it enough even, right? I mean, given the historical information and information I didn't see in the report, which is what are the projections for 2024 and 2025, given that we have this more complexity and all of these new codes to enforce, it seems like historically, that may not be Three might not be enough to catch us up with all the things that she spoke about and, and take care of these new ordinances. You know, giving the pressing needs of the public to enforce the existing laws on our books, in addition to allocating a new code enforcement manager as requested here, why not possibly hire another code enforcement? How are we going to afford this? Well, that's where priority comes in. What do we need more? Our existing laws and code enforcement, or yet unfulfilled housing and, you know, coordinator or community engagement coordinator, maybe some other planned 2024 position, but again, health and safety, code enforcement, it all seems like it's pretty important stuff. Also, are we going to create a streamlined website that'll be there for reporting these things so that it is easier to actually do this code enforcement, because all of the information will be there in the first pass? And what's going to be the measure of adequacy going forward? Are we going to have KPIs? How do we know that we're properly doing this going forward? In looking then at the sidewalk vending ordinance, staff was estimating that there's 15 applicants for the full year, and then there's this other 40, and I don't completely understand this, but it doesn't seem completely reasonable, given all of the outreach and people we had in the meetings. So that might need to be, you know, brought up. The cost does seem super high. Why not make the cost even higher and then give credit back to the local people to get it down to like 400, so the people out of Gilroy aren't even encouraged to come here and we can help the people here? I think that would be a good idea. Alternatively, if you do have to support other people, you know, maybe the full-time, full-year ones are the only ones and it's, you know, what, $6,500 or something? These are people that need it. But again, also, there's nonprofits that are helping with this, so maybe we don't have to worry about that. And then one of the last things I have here is when it comes to enforcement, if, if somebody refuses to comply with the city workers, especially even during the process or before the process of going through it, is that, are they going to be now disqualified or suspended the right? Because it seems like that is a good way to make people want to comply, you know, especially in this first period. And is there going to be some sort of amnesty? Because it sounded like what I heard here is there's going to be some amnesty because people are in the process or we don't really know. When is it really going to be enforced for real on the people in the city? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public comment. And now it's brought back to council. I don't see anyone on my board again, but I'm sure, okay, Councilmember Tovar?
Thank you, Sharon. First of all, I want to commend, commend you guys because just looking on the online application, the FAQ, the checklist, the sort of, the flow chart, very well done, right? Easy to read, I mean, it's good, so I commend you for that. The only question I-
Thanks to John for that.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. That's very, very, very good. And obviously, I know it's going to be in Spanish, so that's good, it's great. But a question in regards to the, when somebody submits an application, what currently is our turnaround time for somebody to get an answer?
Currently, we're still doing the outreach. So yeah, when someone comes in, we'll be, you know, talking to them right at the counter to assist them with all the information they need to provide to us. And if they're able to provide the counter, we will review it there with them. But we also envision, we might have to, you know, go actually visit the site, the location, so that, you know, might have, may, I'm not sure it will be done at the moment, but, you know, could be a scheduled appointment.
Right, so there'll be those special circumstances where, you know, you may have to look at where I'm at, do all that, and then that may take time.
Right.
But if I come in, I have everything in place, you're telling me I'll get an answer right then and there?
That's what we're going to strive for, because yeah, I think there are going to be, you know, a lot of kind of questions to answer back and forth. And that'll be the most efficient way and, yes.
Thank you, and again, great job, guys. Thank you.
Councilmember Klein?
Yeah, I, I think my only concern is the enforcement having enough with all that we have to do, now that our levels are back where it was before, and we, at that point, we're at 3.25 or whatever that was. My, I'm glad we're adding a third, and these, all three positions are full-time, correct?
Correct.
But I'd even be open, at least suggesting and something to consider, but even two part-time, that would be able to come underneath and support that, just if the need's there. That's all, in my mind, just thinking about enforcement and just making sure everything's being done with all the different things we have to consider, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay. There are no other comments, then I'm looking for a motion, the first-
Motion to approve?
Okay, that would be a motion to adopt a resolution establishing a permit application fee. Do I need to take these all separately?
Yes.
Okay. Motion to adopt a resolution establishing a permit application fee and annual renewal fee for sidewalk vending. Motion made by Councilmember Bracco and seconded by Councilmember Tovar. This is a roll call vote. Councilmember Armandares? Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley? Yes. I believe that was unanimous. Yes, okay. Okay, second would be a motion to approve the addition?
Second.
Okay, this one's made by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Tovar to approve the addition of a supervising code enforcement officer position in the community development department. And this one is a digital vote, so you can use your screens. And lastly, do I have a motion to adopt a resolution approving the updated position control list?
So moved.
Okay, so made by Councilmember Armandares and seconded by Councilmember Bracco. Councilmember Klein, you'll, you'll get it there, you'll get faster. Okay? All right. Roll call vote. You can be like me and just never make the motion.
I know.
Councilmember Armandares?
Yes.
Councilmember Bracco?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marks?
Yes.
Councilmember Tovar?
Yes.
And Mayor Blankley? Yes, that too is unanimous. Okay, that brings us to city administrators' reports on the 2023 Aquatics Center season recap.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Real quickly, I just want to give one reminder that the Uvis Creek Cleanup, part of our Fight Dirty campaign, Love Gilroy, is this Saturday, September 23rd, at nine o'clock. The meeting point is Solosano Middle School, so please come out, even if you can only give a little bit of time, there's a lot to be picked up. Second, I just wanted to thank the senior center and our recreation manager, Adam Henig, for a really nice event last Friday, the Ted Carpanetti Room Dedication was there. I met a lot of really nice people, including Ted's family. Ted lived to be 105, and I believe he drove until he was 102. So that's my goal as well, and it was really one of those nice events to go to. Okay, so lastly, I have a message here from recreation manager, Adam Henig, with a quick report on how our swimming season went, and so I'll just read that to you verbatim. The 2023 swim season came to an end on Labor Day weekend. More than 6,000 users, 90% of which were Gilroy residents, attended the Aquatics Center this summer. Total attendance increased from about 6,100 to 6,300. And with the activation of water slides this year, the gate entry increased by about 5%. The aquatics program was able to hand out 30 scholarships for youth swimming lessons, and the pool was, this year, again, operated, second year of our agreement with Swimming Swan, so it has gotten better and better. They've gotten better at their, their work and we're looking forward to perhaps extending that contract with them, as this has been a successful way to operate our aquatics program, given the challenges that we had with labor and staffing and such, they've seemed to be able to, to handle it. So that concludes my report, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
All right, city attorneys' reports.
I have a question, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Councilmember Armandares.
Jimmy, I heard from folks who went every day, just some really great things about it, and they, they really enjoyed it and staff and the affordability of the snack bar
bar, and the way staff interacted, so I appreciate that. But they also, there was some chatter from folks about it closing earlier than had been advertised. Is that true? Can you tell me why?
I, I've heard that before, and typically, the number one reason is, is that they hire a lot of kids that go to school, and they can't always predict when those kids are going to take off for school, but I could double-check to see why it did close early. But in the past, that has been one of the reasons.
Okay, and then the other question was, will there be like services for seniors, like senior swims and things like that?
Well, that's one thing we are hoping to do with this vendor. They started off of doing the two summers for youth and open swim, but the goal is to expand programming back to where we had it pre-pandemic, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, city attorneys' reports.
Not unless you want to hear more about public contracting.
Yeah, no.
Okay? All right.
We heard enough. Okay, then, with that, council meeting is adjourning at 8:58 PM.